You ready to start? Okay, it is IT, great. Hello, good afternoon. My name is Kellye Long. I'm your Board Chair for Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for joining us today in our special meeting. It's the first meeting of the new year of 2021. Happy New Year to all. Apologize for the delay in starting. We are having some technical issues with Facebook Live on English and Spanish, but we are going to start. We will have this recorded on ventura.org/BOSS for today, so at any time you can go back and review our meeting. With this special meeting specifically on COVID-19, unfortunately, as the new year brought in, COVID did not stay in 2020, and it is still rolling on out. So that is unfortunate. However, we have really good news. We have our first meeting with Supervisor Carmen Ramirez. Thank you so much. It is special to have you onboard for 2021. And I know in our regular meeting, just so everyone knows, we will be having our official swearing-in of Supervisor Matt LeVere, Supervisor Carmen Ramirez, and myself for our next term of four years. So with that, I will have a roll call. We have Supervisors on Zoom as well as here in the dais.
Supervisor LeVere.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Huber.
Here.
Supervisor Ramirez.
I'm here.
Chair Long.
Here, thank you. So all Supervisors are attending our special meeting today. And with that, I would like to ask Supervisor Ramirez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for that honor. Put your hand over your heart and make a pledge to the country we love. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one liberty, and the free and equal to each other.
Thank you very much. Always sets a wonderful tone for our meetings. Next, we will have Mr. Mike Powers review our agenda.
Thank you, Chair Long, Board members. Happy New Year and welcome Supervisor Ramirez and your team members, as well as Supervisor LeVere and his team. Just great enthusiasm and energy and spirit already. So really looking forward to working with you all. Item nine, Board of Supervisors, recommendation of Supervisor Parks to appoint Supervisor Carmen Ramirez to the Southern California Association of Governments. A board letter and a comment letter from Teresa Jordan have been submitted. Item 10, CEO's Office, discussion and direction regarding the appointment of a district attorney. Fifteen comment letters and a PowerPoint have been submitted. Item 11, CEO's Office, authorization to make and deliver meals as part of the COVID-19 Expanded Great Plates Program with World Central Kitchen. A board letter and a comment letter from Teresa Jordan have been submitted. Also, we request for this item to be heard right after the COVID update.
Thank you very much. And thank you to staff. I know you all were working very hard over the holidays in regards to COVID-19 and all the other items. I just want to wish all of you and your family, I hope that you had a wonderful holiday in whichever way it was spent. But thank you for your time and effort for putting in all the work for even this meeting today. I know it was a special meeting, so thank you. Supervisors, do you have any other items that you would like to change, modify? And if not, motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion to approve by Supervisor Ramirez, and I believe it was the second by Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Wonderful, so roll call, please.
Supervisor LeVere.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, so that motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item is our COVID update. We've had two weeks of our press conferences with no board meetings, and so it's very important that we're giving our update today. And so, Mr. Powers, thank you for your leadership in presenting today.
Thank you, Chair Long, Board members, county team, and community members. So yes, Happy New Year, and we start the new year in the thick of it. So it's exciting to have the vaccines here and rolling out well here in our county. But at the same time, our cases are just tough. Our numbers are tough, both the community cases and the hospitalizations. And so we're battling this collectively, the community, county, and other community partners on multiple fronts. But also appreciation for the testing piece, the community's continuing to get tested, all of you. We thank you for that. This is one of the only tools we have right now. It's one of the best ones that we have, and we appreciate you continuing to get tested. The numbers are really remarkable. And we're excited that the team with Barry and everybody have been able to rectify the supply chain challenges that were there. And now we've actually had some record days in terms of testing availability in our county with 14 sites. All of the tests are free and many located in our low-income, high-density areas. Of course, a lot of this, the virus battle is happening in our hospitals. And a great credit to our hospital leaderships, EMS, the nurses, the doctors, the housekeepers, respiratory therapists, pharmacists, lab and radiology professionals. It takes the whole healthcare team leaning in to care for really a record number of patients. And I think we've seen, right now, 44% roughly of the patients in the hospital are COVID patients. And so, and it's a record number of total hospital patients we have countywide. So it is a great strain on the system. The hospitals and their wonderful professionals are doing an amazing job of managing it. They can't really keep it up at this rate, but all credit to them for managing and continuing to provide excellent care to our community. When you look to the south and you see what's happening very closely, and I say the south, it's right next door, really, on our border with Los Angeles. You can really see some also tough situations playing out with less capacity, more wait times in the emergency rooms, patients being held, and ambulances waiting for hours and hours on end. It's just something for us to be aware of. It's in our community, we are bordering a very large county of 10 million people. And that creates sort of a special burden on our community. We're seeing some of those ambulances now coming up here, which is not a surprise. And I think we'll hear from Mr. Carroll that 8% of the most recent admissions actually are coming from out of county. So again, if we were in between Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo, we wouldn't have that challenge, but we do, and we just need to manage it. But it's just something for us to be aware of as the team and the community continues to manage. Very important, and we know it's a priority for your board, is to continue to focus on our low-income, high-density communities. And we'll be getting an update today on those efforts, outreach in culturally meaningful ways, testing access. Two of our largest sites are in those low-income, high-density areas, Oxnard and Santa Paula. All the tests are free, of course. Housing support services are being offered, and healthcare services as well in the community. So lots more to come in that area. We'll also compare how we're doing to other counties in Southern California. And in general, I think what you'll see is that our county is doing better. It's not what we want. We want it to be a lot better, but it's just important for context, just for folks to be aware. Wanted you to know also that the tri-county region is something that's still on the table with the state, has been advocated for by your board. The other counties are legislative representatives. They have not said no, they have not said yes. But right now, with the numbers the way they are, we're not really in a position to push too hard for it, but it is there, it is on our table and the front burner as soon as the numbers start trending in a better direction. We will continue to advocate for that. With the vaccination program, just only one thing to say there is that we've set up, I think, a really good team here that has leadership from public health. Sheriff OES and our CEO's office were the idea there that we get the excellent clinical leadership from public health, but also make sure that we're actually over-resourced in this area, because there's nothing more important than getting these vaccines out to our community in need. And so whatever resources are needed, logistics, staffing, equipment, funding, they know they have it and will provide it to them. There are some delays in getting some of the vaccines, and the information from the state's not always smooth. But you know, what we can control, I think the team is controlling it very well. And then, of course, this is an economic crisis as well as a health. So continuing to stay focused on the impacts to our local businesses. There was a federal bill passed. We'll review very quickly what that means to us locally and how to translate that to support our local businesses. New state programs as well. There's a business grant program from the state. And then, of course, our own Business Assistance Program we'll be bringing to your board next meeting on January 12, and requesting conceptual approval. Because although the federal bill did not include some funding for these business assistance programs here locally, your board has budgeted in a way that we do have funds to affect 20 million for another business assistance program. So more to come there. And with, yes, ma'am?
And with that call of action, I really appreciate legislators and working with our state and federal partners in regards to the funding and also for supporting on the vaccines we've sent in a letter for the Phase 1B. We've also sent letters of the coastal region, which is Slow, Santa Barbara, and Ventura, which Dr. Gally on Saturday was, we had a call with the state on that, with CSAC's Executive Group and the Kitchen Cabinet and rural areas. We are being heard in Ventura County. And I want to say thank you to our directors as well. As you're working with your partners, they really know what's going on in Ventura County and really appreciate, because as we know, it is a call of action with our businesses, our hospital system. There's a lot of systems being taxed right now. So I really appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long. And in that regard, just want you to know that we did advocate at the state level to include farm workers in, I believe it's Tier 1B, to move them up on that list. And so I think that is the direction it looks like they're heading, and that's wonderful news. And again, speaking to the spirit of our community, just area aging has been, every time the team's doing a great job of feeding our seniors isolating at home. But the community has also rallied, Ashley Batista put out a call, informally to get help. Over 200 people responded wanting to deliver meals. And there's more to come on that. So it's just a great effort. And then also, we have retired nurses wanting to come volunteer to assist in the vaccination effort, which will be a huge help to us as a force multiplier as well. So with that, we'll continue to partner with the community to battle the virus here. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Vargas. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chair Long, Supervisor Ramirez, CEO Powers, and Board members on Zoom. Happy New Year to all, and wish I could bring good news to your board and to the public with regard to our numbers. But as Mr. Powers indicated, our numbers continue to be of great concern, not only our cases, but especially the current situation in our hospitals. So more to come on that. I'd like to start today's presentation with an update on today's numbers. Since it is in the afternoon, we are able to have these numbers pretty much reliable for what we're going to be reporting today. So you can see that today we're reporting almost 900 new cases, 894. That's way, way too high. And it is almost as close to the 1,000 average that we reported yesterday for the last four days since the holiday. As you know, we reported almost 4,000 yesterday. And so for over four days, that is an average of 4,000. And sure enough, today, we're close to that at almost 900. The total test is a good sign. You know, we've had, as Mr. Zimmerman will report and as we've reported in the past, some challenges with supply and also the weather. But nevertheless, you can see that we're reporting 12,000, over 12,000 additionally tested individuals in Ventura County. And that is just a very important resource that we have for all Ventura County residents to get tested. It's very important for their own sake and for those around them to control this virus, is to know if you have COVID so you can take the necessary isolation measures and that those around you could be further protected by quarantining. So please continue to get tested. So you know, we're now over 44,000 new cases in Ventura County, of Ventura County residents that are infected with the virus that causes COVID. Current hospitalization, Mr. Carroll, our EMS administrator, will speak more to the current hospital situation, but it is very concerning. You'll see that the 420 Ventura County residents that are in our eight wonderful hospitals getting excellent care today, that is really an outstanding or astounding number. A very concerning number, because as you'll see in one of my slides later, you know, we were at 100 or so in the last surge in the summer. And for us to increase to 420 at a new record, we seem to be setting records with regard to new number of folks in the hospital newly reported almost every day is an unfortunate record. So 420 in the hospital and 81 of those very ill that they are in the intensive care unit, many of them on ventilators. So our thoughts and prayers are with all those 420 individuals and their loved ones, and especially those 81 that are in various stages of very serious conditions. And we hope for a swift recovery. The other concerning number here that you see on this table is the number of deaths. Yesterday, we, I think, reported a record number, even for over four days, a record number of fatalities, deaths. And today, we are reporting eight new deaths. So it's very concerning to see family lose loved ones that are infected with the COVID. So now we're almost approaching 300 Ventura County residents that have lost their lives due to COVID. And so we're at 297.
Rego, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In regards to our uptick, you're saying the last four days, we had about 1,000 new cases. And so we're 11 days out from Christmas, correct? So we're, we've seen it in the past on an uptick. Say, for example, Thanksgiving, it was roughly around 14 days that we saw more patients, you know, is it 11 to 14 days to more patients in the hospital? My concern is we had Christmas 11 days and New Year's four days. I'm just wanting to, I'm concerned on that in regards to how it's going to tax our hospital system and if we think we're going to be getting another uptick from the Christmas.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, Chair Long. That is a very real concern that we all have. So that while the current numbers are already showing a further increase due to potential impact of the actual Christmas holiday, we still remain, the rest of the week, to see those numbers still materialize and see how they come in. And then, yes, the second holiday that we just passed, most recent being New Year's, those numbers, any impact to our numbers, those will be next week. And since hospitalizations are a lagging indicator, you know, from a week to two weeks on from folks that are getting detected today as positive or reported today, but being tested and their specimens collected during the holidays, those impacts we'll see in the hospitals in a week to two weeks. And so we need to see an improvement in the cases and case rate as soon as possible so that we can have hope and confidence that our hospitals will see some improvement in their numbers in one or two weeks. So you'll see in the, for additional slides that I have, the trend that is of concern, that is taken into account the holidays.
Thank you. And because I wanted to make sure that our community understands that it's not, we got, you know, certain people got together in Christmas, and they got together in New Year's, so let's do it again. We're seeing the trends in our hospitals, and it's very concerning for all of us. And so we're really urging people to not be socially getting together. And it's just, you can see the impact on the numbers. I just need to make sure everyone understands that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. My next slide, I'll actually switch order just on this one because it's, this is the, you're all familiar, I believe, with this slide. It just summarizes our current metrics. And because this information is usually embargoed till noon on Tuesdays, but because, of course, today's Tuesday afternoon, I'm able to show the latest numbers as published by the state. These numbers are as of December 26, but they are as of noon today. And so these numbers take into account what the state uses on a weekly basis for tier assignments. Of course, no county is really showing improvement and neither getting out of the purple tier. But nevertheless, for when we do improve our numbers, this continues to be the tool and the mechanism for monitoring officially our numbers by the state that do take into account a seven-day average and a seven-day lag. The lag allowing for any, and all additional tests and numbers to come in for that seven-day week average. And so these numbers are as of December 26. The week for these measurements ends on a Saturday, and the state runs them on Monday and reports them again on Tuesdays, usually at noon.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Supervisor.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
Thank you. Did I hear you say no county is doing well? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, I believe all, except for maybe one county. I haven't looked at today, is in the purple tier. And we're all experiencing the surge pretty much statewide. And as you know, nationwide and also worldwide, there's still several surges going on.
Right, and I spoke with Supervisor Bass of Humboldt. That is the red, they've moved into the red tier. And it's still completely concerning to them as well. Just because you moved into the red and you have purple all around, it doesn't mean that it's safe.
Right, and of course, we're next to Los Angeles, which is, it's being called the epicenter. I don't know of the nation, but certainly of the state. So it's very, very concerning, because so many of us have, I have family in Los Angeles, and people work there and live here and vice versa. So it's, you cannot take it for granted that we're safe because we're on the other side of the grade.
That's right.
That's a good point, too, Supervisor. In regards to the LA County, what I was reading is the fact that they have a 10-day stay-at-home order. So if we had family in LA, we shouldn't be visiting our family in LA. That's a hard one for everybody.
I haven't seen them since March.
Yes, very hard.
It's very hard, definitely. So a quick rundown of the highlights of this snapshot table. The first one on the left upper corner is a seven-day average case rate. This is an adjusted case rate per 100,000. And you can see that we're at almost 59. And that is, again, an adjusted case rate. That is an increase from last week, but actually it is, you'll see in another slide where we report the unadjusted case rate, and that actually was lower than the previous week. The reason why our adjusted case rate increased is that we didn't get the same favorable adjustment factor due to the ever-changing state median that they judge each county for that adjustment factor. And so while we're still testing higher than the volume for the state, we didn't get a favorable adjustment factor. Usually, it's half of our actual, which is 71. So we would have seen about 35 adjusted case rate. But again, we didn't get the, an actual adjustment factor in the same way we have in the past. So we are at almost 59 adjusted case rate. And you can see from, it's probably hard to see there, the tiers. But we're very far off from being within the tier that we need to be at, I believe it's seven, less than seven to be in the purple and four to seven to be in the red. And so, you know, we were in the red, in the purple tier, very close to the red. So it's definitely doable, possible, and we will get there. But we can't wait, you know, long enough to be able to get to that point. But right now, our numbers are still increasing and of great concern, as we're all saying. The positivity rate is the other metric that the state follows for placement in tiers. And you see that those numbers continue to increase. Our positivity rate overall for the county is 13.5%. And the health equity positivity rate, that is also a seven-day rate, is average is 19.7, so very high. So that means one out of five residents in our low-income, high-density communities that roughly correspond to Oxnard and Santa Clara Valley, almost 102 that get tested in those areas. One out of five gets a positive result, so it's very concerning. And as Mr. Powers indicated, you know, it's nothing to brag necessarily that our numbers are better than many counties and pretty much all of Southern California counties. Our numbers are better, but these numbers are really, really high. And so there's still room to turn this, an opportunity to turn these numbers around. But they're very concerning. As a final here note, in terms of ICU bed capacity, as you know, that is the current focus measure that the state is following for continuation of counties in the stay-at-home order for the region. And so for that, as a region, we're still currently in the larger Southern California region. For that, the adjusted ICU bed capacity for adults, it's zero, no capacity. And for us, the state is also reporting a zero bed capacity. This is an adjusted number as well. The way the adjustment goes for ICU beds is that an adjustment factor is built in to account for the fact that COVID patients are very intense, require very intense care. And so if a county has, I believe, over 50 or 60% of the cases, patients COVID in a hospital, that is a greater concern, because of course, there's other illnesses for which residents need to be hospitalized. And if a majority of them are COVID-positive, then it's even more labor-intensive. And so that's why there's an adjustment factor down. Our actual capacity percent is seven and a half today. But again, adjusted, because of our high percent of COVID patients is to zero. And so more on that to follow by Mr. Carroll. Let's get back to my order here. So I'll go through these slides a little bit quicker. I presented them in the past, just because yesterday was such a high number of almost 4,000 number. And previously, we had over 3,000 also on a Monday. And while those take into account sometimes not only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday numbers, but in this case, it's over four days, as I mentioned. It includes also Thursday, since Friday we didn't report. But you can see still that it's overall increased number of volume. And you'll see the same curve when it's for all tests that are being done on a monthly basis, not just on Mondays. So this graph shows the daily case rate per 100,000 resident. And this is all the way from June 1. You know, you see the late June, July uptick there. This is the adjusted daily case rate. And you see that we did well in September, October, first part of November, and since early part of November until this latest report from the state that corresponds to the weekend in December 26. Our adjusted case rate, as I said before, it's almost at 59, at 58.9. And so very, very high. We need it to be, come down as soon as possible. So further in terms of the trend, this is the unadjusted case rate. And you see that, you know, back in the surge in the summer, our unadjusted case rate was 18 and a half, and now we're at almost 71. So this is very concerning. It has dropped, as I said earlier, from the last week's reported state numbers. We were at 79.7. And so we did see an improvement here. But again, the caution, and unfortunately, you know, to use the word pessimism, but the, you know, even though we're showing an improvement from 79.7 last week to 70.9 in the unadjusted case rate, we are already seeing with these daily report numbers of cases that are increasing since December 26. So we expect our case rate to go back up again, even higher than 70.9, probably higher than the 79 that we reported last week. And as soon as we finish with the one or two weeks after the holidays, and then if at that point, we start seeing an improvement in the case rate, I'll have more confidence and be more optimistic to say it's looking like we're flattening the curve for us to just show one-week improvement. And with the holiday numbers still coming in, unfortunately, it's probably not a true indication of a real improvement in case rate. This just shows the positivity rate that I reported earlier. In the summer, it was 7.6, and now 13.5 of all Ventura County residents that go get tested. In the last two weeks, it shows a positive result and even higher, as I said, in the health equity areas. Back on the somewhat of a good news front. Back on the somewhat of a good news front, again, our test numbers, even though we didn't get the same one half favorable adjusted factor that led to our fairly high case rate, adjusted case rate today, nevertheless, you can see there that we are doing a lot more testing than we did at the height of the summer and we've doubled that number to almost 600 and our, our number there is 200 more than the current state average. Mr. Powers?
Yeah, I just want to highlight that for a minute, so I think the updated number is 649 and the, so at 649, that's 200 more than the state average.
That's right, yeah.
And also wanted to hit on, and I checked social media to see what people are saying about how we're doing as a county, how the testing numbers, how the timing and, and someone had stated that we've done over 850,000 tests, aren't we done?
Uh huh.
And I, and I, I chuckled.
Yeah.
Just like Mr. Powers did because it's a moment in time of the testing. It, it doesn't mean that you got tested yesterday and tomorrow you'll be COVID free because it said that it was negative.
Yeah.
We are asking our community to test if they are exposed to COVID-19, if they have the symptoms or are feeling asymptomatic, we are asking those to get tested and we've really stepped up as a county, I want to say thank you to the staff of that number just to do all those tests. That's a lot of staffing time, a lot of logistics and, and support and it's just really impressive how we've been able to really excel our testing. And please just urge you to, if you feel that you've gotten exposed, to get tested. I think that's really a crucial, crucial time for us.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out Supervisor. The, yes, we need people to continue to get tested and so it's not just a one time situation and as you've pointed out too, is not also an indication that just because you got tested and you test negative, that it's a free pass to, to socialize or, or to let your guard down with regard to mask wearing and social distancing and, and hand hygiene, it's still, it's a matter of, at that point in time, you got, you tested negative and it's a good, good sign, but don't let your guard down and get tested again and again, whenever you feel you've been exposed or just want to be assured of your status. Because as we know, up to almost a half of all cases are among folks that are not showing any symptoms and therefore you may unknowingly be infecting and exposing others to the virus. So lastly, as I transition my presentation over to Mr. Carroll, just further on the hospital, just to again, compare today's unfortunate record of 420 Ventura County residents that are in our hospitals, that compared to 101 are the height of our summer surge on July 15th. This is, as Mr. Powers indicated, just a, a trend that our hospitals, as awesome as they are, they cannot sustain a continued trend of increasing numbers of, of this magnitude. And so with that, Mr. Carroll will expand on the current situation with our hospitals, but I want to thank all the hospital personnel that are working around the clock, they're exhausted, they've been at this for over 10 months and now with these numbers, they're I'm sure doing double and triple shifts and not spending time with their families and being exposed even more so to, to the virus and when the hospital rooms are, are full. So our thoughts and thank yous go out to the brave, wonderful healthcare personnel, the nurses, the doctors and all the staff that are treating these patients. And so I know, you know, my department, public health, all the county family departments continue to work so hard every day, but really the, the brave hospital workers are the ones that are really at the forefront right now. And so we, we should do all that we can to further control and what we can to, to bring these numbers down, not only for ourselves or loved ones, but also to help our, our hospital workers get a little bit of reprieve from, from all that they're doing right now because it's, 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 it's a lot.
Thank you, and at this point, I will open it up to the supervisors. Supervisor Ramirez, do you have a question for Rego?
Yes, yes, thank you very much and I actually do know an ICU nurse who's doing five consecutive overnights shifts, that's, that's a lot for somebody doing that kind of intense work, so we do really appreciate people who've been sacrificing. But can you say something about, you know, there is the myth that's still out there that if you, this only affects older people or people with sickness underlying comorbidities as we say, can you say something about that?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Ramirez for that question, an opportunity to remind everyone that this virus does not discriminate on age, gender or any other demographic variable. It has killed children and young people. Our hospitals have, at our press conferences, our hospital personnel, our team has reported how they're seeing younger and younger patients that they're caring for in their twenties and their thirties. And so this is a disease that is having a toll, not only of course, economic, but health-wise and the ultimate sacrifice of death to all ages and genders and ethnicities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors on Zoom, Supervisor Parks?
Rita, I'm wondering two things. One is there are concerns about oxygen supplies at hospitals. I don't know if you can address that or if someone else will be.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Parks, Mr. Carroll will address that. We're definitely closely monitoring and working with our hospitals on that supply as well as other materials and issues that they're having and he'll have the latest on the oxygen issue.
Thank you, and you know, it is just tragic to see, you know, 420 people in the hospital where, you know, just a few months ago, we were averaging about 30 people, so it's just a tremendous overload and needing one in the ICU. Can you, you didn't mention doubling time, but can you talk a little bit about that and what it means and how we're doing?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor. The, Dr. Levin might have the latest on that, but I know that yesterday when I looked at it, we were in the low 40s, which is an improvement from, you know, the, the high twenties and thirties that we had the last few days. So I again, have unfortunately, some reservations about being optimistic that we're flattening the, the curve, again, because we're still awaiting the results from, from the testing that is, of those folks that might have had high exposures during the holidays. But the doubling time is the number of days that it takes to double our cases and so that is showing a favorable sign, but again, I would be more comfortable in, in saying how, how we're trending at this time or even later next week because that would get us to some of the numbers based on the New Year's holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Lavier?
Yeah, thank you Chair Long. Mr. Vargas, there was an article in the LA Times over the weekend which noted some outbreaks at, at large businesses throughout their community. I think they mentioned several Home Depots, Costco's, some fast food restaurants. And I received several emails from constituents over the weekend wondering why our public health department wasn't sharing similar data on outbreaks here locally. And so I wanted to pose that question to you.
Sure, thank you Supervisor Lavier. So we are looking into, you know, possibly doing a little bit more reporting around businesses and, and outbreaks. We had not up to this point in part because our county is much smaller than, of course, than LA and I think the majority of counties are not like LA or San Diego reporting this level of detailed information. But really, that's also not just the reason why we didn't do it early on. While we appreciate the, the public's interest in knowing where the, the virus is being found from a public health perspective in terms of, of, you know, preventing exposure and, and reducing risk of, of, of getting the COVID from just knowing that X, Y business had an outbreak, which by the way, is defined as three cases or more over the last 14 days. That by having some information posted of X, Y business having had an outbreak, that is a, a time where first of all, it's, it's, it's happened and all businesses, by the time we reach out to them, have already taken precautionary additional measures to protect their employees and any, any public that is accessing their businesses. So for example, staff would have been quarantined or, or isolating already, they would have disinfected their public areas, high exposure areas. And so by the time a community resident goes to that business, there really is no particular additional risk of, of being exposed other than the virus already being readily out in the community. And, and, and so I think it just kind of places some, some burden on the business because right now, all businesses, all, all, really everyone is at, at risk of being exposed because of such high community transmission. The, the only other reason why we, you know, didn't also report is that early on, when there were not that many cases, we were concerned that potentially a few businesses might be concerned with, you know, notifying us of, of that they had an actual exposure and for us to come in and help them because then it might lead for undue negative publicity. But that wasn't the, the main reason. Main reason again, is we didn't see a public health benefit to residents knowing, but again, I recognize that LA is doing it, we're looking into that. There is a new state law that requires all businesses to report outbreaks, more formerly law now through a Cal OSHA law to local health departments. So now that we have that information coming into us, we might look to reporting it publicly. But again, I, I'd say that it's just, as an FYI, I would say, once that information is out, it's not necessarily something to say, I'm not going to go to that restaurant or I shouldn't go to that other business, I'm going to get exposed and I'm going to get contaminated, that, that I don't think is, is really what would be in place.
We, Matt, can I just ask a question on that question?
Of course, of course.
In regards to the vulnerable population, we have VenturaCountyRecovers.org where we have a chart there that talks about all of the percentages and on that is the industry, a service industry of groceries and food service, which is your 1%. I'm just wondering if Costco is included in that or maybe we're already reporting it, I just, I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, so, so thank you for the reminder, we are in a congregate or combined way by sector reporting those numbers and that is very consistent with the majority of Ventura, of state counties, statewide counties and, and so that category would include businesses like the Costcos or Targets that are mentioned in the LA Times article, well specifically Costco because they do have the food section and some Targets and Walmarts also have the food section, so it would include supermarkets. And again, so, so far we've been reporting by sector and not by calling out a specific individual site and noting their, their address and, and other information.
Thank you, because in that chart, I mean, it's just really important that we look at where exactly those vulnerable populations and where the exposures are, because I know businesses, we need to get them opened and it just shows that less than 1% was in the shopping starts and so forth, so I don't know, just wanted to point that out. Thank you. Sorry Supervisor Lavier?
Of course, no, thank you. Yeah, and just one follow up, Mr. Vargas, and I appreciate you bringing up the new OSHA rules because I had a question about that. I read that those were coming into effect and I was curious whether or not that reported had started and secondly, if there was any requirement in those new OSHA rules about public disclosure.
Yeah, thank you for the follow up question. It has started in terms of the requirement for businesses to report to us and we, some were very proactive, have been proactive all along and readily reached out to us, you know, in March, April and into the summer when they had outbreaks because they wanted our assistance and, and we helped those businesses, but now it's a law and, and so in December, there were some proactive businesses that were reaching out to us and reporting even when they had one case, but it is, the requirement is for three cases or more. And, and so we have on our webpage, a, a form, a fillable form for businesses to do that reporting and that, those numbers are reported up to the state, the state I believe is, is going to be reporting statewide, the numbers also by sectors. But with that data, as I mentioned, we're, we're looking to also make it available in some form in the near future for Ventura County specific.
Great, thank you Mr. Vargas, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Huber, did you have any questions? No? Okay.
No questions.
All right, wonderful, I just want to make sure we got that, those questions answered before we moved on to Mr. Carroll. Rego, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, I know you'll be giving an update probably tomorrow at the conference as well at 1 o'clock at Public Health, so thank you. Mr. Carroll, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Actually breathe a little bit here. So Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, welcome to the new board members. I'm Steve Carroll, Emergency Medical Services Administrator, provide a quick update on hospital capacity and some ambulance impacts today. Our hospital, as of, as both Mr. Powers and Rego mentioned, were at extraordinary numbers, we are at record numbers now. We are at 950 hospitalized patients throughout Ventura County with 126 of those in the ICU. And just to put this in perspective from just a few weeks ago, just prior to the Thanksgiving surge, we had 650 hospitalized patients. So we are 300 more hospitalized patients in a span of six weeks compared to, to the total impact that that's having on, on our hospitals. So that 650 back to that Thanksgiving, pre Thanksgiving surge, only 72 of those were in the ICU. We're now seeing 126 ICU level patients and 950 hospitalized patients. This is severely impacting our hospitals. We are at our point where hospitals are making extraordinary efforts, they are doing an absolute amazing job, but this is a critical level. We are, we are at a place where, where we need to be making changes and our, our, our public needs to do what needs to be done in order to not spread this further, to have this surge spread further. So as was mentioned earlier, with over 420 COVID positive patients with 81 of those in the ICU, that's over 40% of our hospitalized patients are COVID positive. Those COVID positive patients are more labor intensive and not only are they sicker, but they're also, it's a lot of additional effort to treat appropriately a COVID positive patient. They require more PPE, they require isolation and, and then as I said, they're sicker. So we are seeing a significant impact to our hospitals, which are doing an absolutely amazing job. But, but again, this can't continue, we have to figure out how to stop the spread and that is going to be by people doing the right thing and, and stopping the, the, the spread appropriately. Our current bed availability is also critically low. Reported today, we had two ICU beds across the county available and staffed. Doesn't mean that our hospitals can't surge to go above that and find other spaces as they've been doing now for, you know, for nine months or 10 months, but there's two staffed beds available in our county right now and for ICU, there's 57 non ICU beds available. This again, is not necessarily taking into account all of our surge capacity, but it is what's staffed and available today and, and it's concerning. You know, we're, we're eating these, these beds up as soon as they make changes and add additional capacity, they're filling it up. Our hospitals are holding patients that should have hospital beds in the ICU or in one of the telemetry units or even in a regular hospital bed and they're having to hold them in the emergency room and tying up emergency room capacity because they have no other place to put them and safely to deal with them. The hospitals are continuing to work hard to respond to the surge and they have implemented various measures, including deferring electric surgeries and procedures and diverting patients to outpatient services. And there's also some new guidelines that came out from the state that we'll be having some additional information, likely next week we'll be reporting on, which is a crisis continuum. It puts levels of a, a conventional level, which is what hospitals should sort of normally be operating in and then contingency where they're kind of, you know, making some changes and then there's crisis. Our hospitals have been in contingency, but we're likely putting our foot into crisis and some of them are going to be diving into crisis here pretty soon because this is getting really, really serious and we're, we're getting to a place where we're, we're maxing out. There's also some challenges with that plan that could potentially have them try, have the state try to move patients from other areas into our hospitals, which is very concerning. We're not at that level just yet, but that is something that is being discussed and, you know, our hospitals are doing amazing and our system is doing amazing to try to maintain what we have and to be available for our resources here, but having But having a bunch of patients moved in from out of the area would be, would be an additional burden on our system. The question about oxygen, there is some significant concerns about oxygen in some of the other counties. Some of the hospitals in Los Angeles County reported oxygen problems, but it was actually an infrastructure issue because of some older structures where the oxygen volume was so much that it was actually freezing the oxygen's delivery system. So some of that is being worked on. I understand the Army Corps of Engineers has actually been called in to assist some of the hospitals and trying to address that. We have not had reports of that locally. We have heard some local challenges with portable oxygen and the ability to send patients home on oxygen, that is a challenge in getting some of the, some of the patients the appropriate oxygen at home. Also in Los Angeles County, they are actually rationing oxygen to only patients that have a 90% O2 level. Ours for our EMS system currently is 94%. We're evaluating whether we need to modify that, but at this point, we're not making that change. There's also some changes that were reported recently in Los Angeles on some of their non-salvageable patients that they were no longer going to be transporting. We've evaluated what they're doing in Los Angeles and some of our policies actually were ahead of what they were doing and we already do that in our normal day to day business. So we're evaluating whether there's any changes that we need to do based on the current volume, but we already have that capacity within our regular system. As I mentioned, the hospitals are very, very full and our ERs are very, very full. At times, we don't have any place to put ambulances. More ambulances come into our hospitals, there's no place to put those patients. When we watch this very closely, our ambulance, what we call an ambulance patient offload time, that is a metric that we capture. A year ago, that time averaged 19 minutes. Currently, the average time is over 30 minutes now. But we're here, we're having reports of actually within our county of four and five hour delays to get patients offloaded because there just isn't any place to put a patient that is bed bound when there are no beds. And then they also have staffing issues where they can't appropriately take the care of that patient when they don't have the people to do it. Our system is working with our ambulance providers and our first responders to put additional staff, you know, in place to help with that. And we're also working on ways to have non-transport folks come in and help staff a patient that may be waiting at the hospital so that we can get that ambulance back on the road to serve our 911 system. Our current PPE is still okay, but we are seeing some significant challenges with gloves, some masks and hand sanitizer and we have restricted some of that restock that is being sent out to the non-acute care or first responder system. And then lastly, we are continuing to work with our long-term care partners. The long-term care and the skilled nursing facilities have had a lot of outbreaks. I think it's 90 plus recently of our facilities have outbreaks going on. But we are working with those facilities that are capable and have access and availability to offload some of the patients from the hospitals into those facilities where they can safely deal with them and try to decompress the hospitals in some way. So that's all that I have for today. I'm available for any questions.
Steve, thank you very much. That segues very importantly into our senior care facilities. I do know that we have had some, some of the seniors actually go into the ER and test positive. And then the concern we've had in the past was that we were holding them in the hospital, but when those senior centers already have a couple that are positive, how does, how is that interaction? If those seniors would be better at home, which we know most of the time, we don't want to hold anyone in a hospital. We want them at home and being taken care of. How does that work?
So I want to address the word hold first.
Thank you.
Hold is not a mandate. We've been using the term holding as a holding area to appropriately isolate folks that are in skilled nursing or long-term care facility level that can't appropriately isolate, like they live in a room that has two beds in it. You know, if there's, you know, if there's two patients and one is positive, one's negative, you don't want to push that person back to that same facility. So we've developed these holding areas originally start off in the hospitals and since we've expanded it to a couple of contracted facilities that we have within the county that we're currently, as of last night, we're holding 22, that we have moved out of the facilities where they're, they're not able to be appropriately isolated into a facility where they can for their isolation period. So it's about 10 days that they're moved to that facility and then when their isolation is done, as long as they're stable, they are moved back to the, to their home facility. We don't generally do it from homes, although we do have residential care homes that we do. And then we also are using that same system to help offload some of the patients in the hospitals, specifically the emergency rooms that don't have a place to put a patient when they can't go back to a facility. We've been moving folks from there into our isolation facilities. Does that answer your question?
It does and I knew this system was working well, but I needed our public to know that. We've had some constituents contact our office and me personally about that and I was very proud to say that we have been doing everything we can to really take care of the patient and that is really important. The other question they were having is in regards to the vaccines because we know that elderly are a vulnerable population and those in senior care facilities are closer together than if they were living at home. The question was in regards to vaccines, how do we do that? How do we make that available for them? And then also those seniors that we're delivering food to. I was at many houses dropping off food to a couple that can't go out, you know, and they would be better served if maybe they chose to have the vaccine. So I'm throwing out that question. I know, Steve, you might not be the one asking, going to answer that, but if, when that time comes, if we can make sure we answer those questions, because I know it is very connected to the hospital and people going in and with their senior homes and so forth, so.
All right. I can tell you the skilled nursing facility is being handled now.
Okay, yes, please.
Is actually being addressed as part of our vaccination plan now, but I think Dr. Levin is coming up soon and I think he can address those questions.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. One of the things is people are still getting in traffic accidents, having heart attacks and if ambulances, as we're hearing in other places, are holding on to patients till a bed is available, can you say something about ambulance availability in our county?
So our system works actually quite well in that it actually adjusts our entire system across our entire county. So all of our ambulances are dispatched by one dispatch center at our county fire department. So fire and ambulance are all dispatched by one center. So they see all the available resources and they're able to move them around to where they best serve our greater population. So with the higher times where the ambulances are holding at the hospitals where they can't turn around as fast as we would normally expect, that system adjusts and they move the resources around to best serve. So sometimes we get very low. So we obviously are doing a lot of work with our ambulance providers and our hospitals to try to mitigate those delays because we do need those ambulances back in the system to be able to run the next call. But our system is designed and we're, it was designed to adjust for this. I mean, it's something that happens within the 911 system as you adjust that volume. So we do have ambulances available. Our ambulance response times may have gone up a little bit, but not dramatically. You know, we're, we're still watching that, but, but again, it's something that is out of the ambulance control. You know, this is something that, you know, is impacting us all.
Can you say anything about whether or not we're seeing less accidents, less home emergencies such as heart attacks, strokes?
So in the spring, we saw a significant decrease, about 40% to our 911 volume. We are not seeing that right now. So we're seeing a little bit collectively, I think on the year, I heard so far just preliminary numbers that they were down overall about 4%. So our numbers are still continuing, people are still calling 911. There oftentimes our number of COVID patients that we're seeing in our 911 world is significant. Our 911 and fire and ambulance providers are dealing with a lot of COVID patients who get sick, who try to maintain at home and oftentimes they maintain, try to maintain at home too long and they're very sick. But accidents, I don't know that specific number of whether our accidents are less. I don't know, maybe Dr. Fankhauser may be able to address it from the trauma side if they're seeing a reduction from trauma. But overall, it's not a significant decrease like we saw in the spring. We're not seeing that now. Yes.
Thank you, and I think you see that on the cars on the freeway. It's been quite busy out there. Supervisor Parks, I see you might have a question. Please go ahead.
Yeah, and it's to follow up on Supervisor Ramirez's question too. In Los Angeles County, I'm hearing that some of the hospitals have declared internal disasters and they're not having ambulances come and their EMS director has ordered the ambulances, I guess not to take what I think you referred to as non-salvageable patients for people that don't have a likelihood of making it, to not bring them into the emergency rooms. Is there a, like a tiering that happens as our ambulance capacity becomes exceeded and in, you know, in relationship to being able to deliver to the hospitals?
So, yes Supervisor, thank you. We, we have a variety of different issues. We have some dispatch protocols that we can implement that will potentially change the resources that we send to 911 calls. We have not, we have not gotten to that level yet, but we're prepared to move to that if we have to. We also have, we're constantly watching the need to adjust our policies and procedures and make those changes. As I mentioned, LA didn't have the same policy that we already had for the non-salvageable patients, which are essentially cardiac arrests. They've already, they already don't have a pulse and, and they're not breathing. We have a policy where we work with them for 40 minutes and if they do not respond to what's been, been done, then we do not transport those patients. And Los Angeles did not have that policy, so now they've implemented something that's similar to what we've been doing for quite some time. So we already have those issues. The other scenario is we're looking at all the various options from our EMS team and our providers are working on options to either put additional units on the road as needed, put additional staff. As I mentioned, we're putting some folks into positions where they can go to the hospitals and relieve the ambulance crew of the responsibility to watch the patient so that that ambulance can get back on the road. So we're working on kind of looking outside of the box. It's kind of, this is, this is a different, it's a different world.
It is and I appreciate so much the good work you do. We, at the board, find out more that we didn't know about what our staff does in these situations and you have been instrumental in all the logistics from ambulances to hospital beds and all. And I don't know if you're also involved in determining how we can get more people out there to do the vaccinations and I know, obviously our ambulance folks, our paramedics are pretty darn busy and our hospital staff, so I don't, that might be a future presentation coming up here, but that's something else that I think is going to be a huge logistics issue that we need to address pronto.
Yes, our EMS providers, the paramedic level of our EMS providers are allowed to do vaccinations and so we actually have them. I have a call tomorrow with some of our providers to, to plan on how we're going to roll that out because I do believe that we can assist in some without impacting our 911 staff. So we'll be looking to augment that here in the near future.
All the employees, we can get helping on that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Powers, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you Supervisor Parks. To your point on the vaccination resource piece and staffing, as I said, we structured the task force in such a way that we want to make sure that the task force has all the resources they need, funding, equipment and staffing. And that includes drawing on the public health EMS team, that's wonderful, but also disaster service workers and Mr. Otten is working in. And the team knows this is a top priority and we need all hands on deck and so everybody's being freed up to do this. We've also had members of the community, retired nurses volunteer to want to come back and help vaccinate. So we're very excited to be able to facilitate those efforts as well. So it is, you know, again, we want to over resourced whatever the task force needs, we'll make sure that they have it.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
What about organizations like the Red Cross? Would they be able to assist with this too?
Very possibly and that's something we can, we can discuss more with you. Maybe Steve could speak to that.
Yes, we've actually spoken with Red Cross. They're, they have some national challenges as far as what they're allowed to deploy to, but I think that locally, whatever they can assist with, they will certainly step up and do. But it's not necessarily going to be a huge labor force because they're taxed everywhere across the country too.
Yep.
Thank you. And you also talked about retired nurses. I think we heard about that earlier.
That's what I was just saying, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
This is looking at Dennis also, she's a great researcher.
Yep, exactly.
How do, how do, how do they notify us?
So that's something, we're going to get a report from the Vaccine Task Force here just in a few moments.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes, I have several questions I might ask. How many out of town county resident, the first one is how many out of town county residents are being cared for in the Ventura County hospitals?
So I'm hearing this today, I think it was just under 8% of our, of our hospitalized patients are, have addresses outside of Ventura County. I don't have the number, it's, I saw the eight, it's like 7. something percent. I don't have the number off the top of my head.
All right, thank you very much. Second question, have county hospitals begun to prepare hospital rooms in older buildings so they can be used?
Yes, so we've been doing that actually since March. Our hospitals, like I said in previous meetings, we've, we're very fortunate to have three old hospitals next to our brand new hospitals at Pleasant Valley, VCMC and CMH. So they have those available options. The challenge is that we can have beds, but we need people to staff them and that's really where we're having some challenges. So infrastructure wise, we don't have as much problem. I think we have more capacity than we have the ability to staff and I think that's really where we're, where we're struggling.
Thank you very much for your feedback. I really appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you Supervisor.
Thank you Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Lavier, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. And Supervisor Huber kind of hit on this, but it was said earlier in this report that there was the potential for LA area ambulances to be redirected into our county, given the situation in LA. And obviously, listening to this report, we have our own serious issues with that availability and it looks like close to 8% right now of our hospitalizations are already out of the area. And I was curious what, if anything, we could be doing to ensure that there's going to be beds available for local residents.
So yes, the, the local ambulances obviously go to generally, most of them are going to transport to our local hospitals. We do have on the East County, Las Robles and, and Simi Valley, Adventist South Simi Valley, do have the potential to have ambulances venture over the LA County, from the LA County line into our, our two Ventura County hospitals because they may be the closest open hospital. So we are working on an option to try to level load our own system here in the near future, but understanding that some of those patients are going to walk, or not walk in, but they're going to be driven in as the closest hospital because there is such an impact in our hospitals in LA. But we're likely to see a decrease in the number of ambulances when we make some adjustments to our system here that are coming in from outside of our county. So, and we don't send that many ambulances out of the county because our, there's not as many hospitals that are on the other side of the borders for us.
Obviously something on our radar that, you know.
Absolutely.
All of these, all of these local regions are dealing with serious crunches in that availability and, you know, we just have to be prepared for the fact that this continues to get worse as we're afraid it might, it might, just recognizing the fact that I think we should be doing everything we can to make sure there's better availability for local residents first and foremost.
Absolutely, and we also have to be cognizant of the, the need to help our neighboring, if we have the capacity, some capacity with, with some in reserve for our folks to help, we probably need to because they're going to be the ones that we're going to be reaching out to in a disaster in the future when we need help. And so it works both ways, mutual aid works both ways, but, but you also have to protect your own and be able to provide for your own before you're able to provide to outside.
Yeah, absolutely. I think if we have availability, we need to be doing whatever we can to help our neighbors. But at the same time, as you mentioned, it's understanding that I think the critical need has to be local first. So thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Thank you. And based on Supervisor Huber's question about the old hospital being used for VCMC, we also have other hospitals that are private hospitals that are doing the same, correct?
Correct. So Pleasant Valley Hospital has an old hospital next door to their, you know, their newer hospital and CMH, right down the street from VCMC, also has an older tower, they call it the Mountain Tower. And they have actually been And they have actually been using theirs. VCMC, I believe, has been using some portions of theirs. And again, I think it's, it's something that as we've gone through this surge, has gone back and forth, so they open it a little bit as they need, and then when the, the demand has reduced, they're able to close that and go back to their regular footprint. And then they have been, you know, preparing it. So, it's, they're, all, all the hospitals actually proactively got relicensed for those beds, and Pleasant Valley has about 30 beds. Again, it gets back to the staffing. So, we have some capacity if we have additional staff, or even thinking differently. You know, we may be thinking, you know, that it's not going to be a nurse, you know, that's going to be staffing it in the future, depending on what happens, you know, as this continues.
Thank you, and I, I want to make sure we remind our public of that, that we are staffing, making sure that we are prepared for a worst case, even though we don't want to use it. But then also, I want to say thank you to all the private and public community members that have been meeting for our hospitals and our long-term facilities. I thank you very much for your due diligence to make sure we are collaboratively working in other counties, they are not, and it's very unfortunate. But again, Ventura County is very much a team county, and I really appreciate all that work that's going into a lot of this logistics, because it's, if we screw up, it's major, and we don't want to.
It's extraordinary what's been happening in our county with our hospitals, having weekly and now twice weekly conference calls with our hospitals, where their executive leaders at every single hospital is on these calls. It's, obviously, it's important to them, it's important to us, and they are working together like we've never seen before. It's amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Yes, I sit on those calls, and I can tell you, I think your board and the community would feel very reassured at the coordination that's happening through Mr. Carroll and his office and all the hospitals. Everybody's chipping in, pitching in, helping each other. It's, it's really amazing. And, and to Supervisor Lavier's point, yes, we do want to, mutual aid's important, and we want to be good team players, but I can assure you that we are trying to protect our own local county here, and, and we work so well together too. That's not the case in other places, you know, and the state is seeing that, and, and some of these hospitals and so forth, you know, in terms of elective surgeries and transfers and so forth, we don't have that here, and we want to protect that and preserve that for the benefit of our community. And we were having some of those discussions with the state this weekend, I can actually talk. So, you talk about new hospitals, multiple benefits come from that, old hospitals for surge capacity, but also Supervisor Parks' question about oxygen and infrastructure, because these systems have invested in new hospitals, they have the updated infrastructure to deliver oxygen efficiently, including with your board's own support. And then one last point for Mr. Carroll, and then I have a question for Dr. Frankhauser. Just so you know, Board, if John actually could start coming, Mr. Carroll this weekend, in fact, on Saturday, went to every hospital at Saturday night to look at their ERs and the, and the ambulance transition, to see for himself how it was going and how we could better expedite and streamline that. So, Steve, really appreciate all the work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Mental health patients, of course, are also a priority, we know, for your board and our community, and one of the subjects that came up on one of the calls was the issue of COVID-positive mental health patients, and Dr. Frankhauser and team has done a great job of addressing this issue, so maybe you could give an update?
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And while he's coming up, Mr. Powers, when you were talking about the wonderful coordination we have with all of our hospitals, that we're in this dialogue, and hopefully that will continue beyond COVID-19, and as you were talking about, people with mental health crises ending up in emergency rooms, for those hospitals to be a partner in helping us to treat that, that population too.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Parks. It is a great platform to keep that momentum going.
Mr. Frankhauser, Dr. Frankhauser?
Thank you, Chair Long and Supervisors, Mr. Powers. We have had a significant challenge managing patients with primary behavioral health issues in that the COVID epidemic has also affected that group of patients, and we found them in emergency rooms on 5150 holds, testing positive for COVID, and really having no place that was safe to go. To, to create a COVID unit really requires some specific facility requirements that, we have one location in our inpatient psychiatric unit that is currently used as a crisis stabilization unit that would meet those criteria. But really, seeing the need in the community and recognizing that this crisis is only getting worse, we have made the decision to take that crisis stabilization unit and use that space to create an inpatient COVID unit for psychiatric patients who require hospitalization. We're able to continue to manage the crisis stabilization unit in another area of our inpatient psychiatric unit, so those patients will continue to be served in the way that they have been serving those patients. But this allows us to move patients who have COVID and have a primary behavioral health issue that requires hospitalization into a safe area for psychiatric care. As we always have, when a patient who has behavioral health problems has an acute medical illness, whether it's COVID or tuberculosis or heart failure, those patients will continue to be managed in acute care hospitals with psychiatric consultation. But that population that has decompensated mental health illness and needs hospitalization and COVID is a secondary issue and doesn't require hospitalization specifically for COVID, those patients can be moved into the COVID unit in our inpatient psychiatric unit, and that, that should be opened in the next day or two. We're still making sure that we have covered all our bases with our infection prevention and control department so that we don't put our staff at risk.
Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, I'm delighted that that is being considered. Sometimes, you know, these things just get pushed on us, and we realize we need that ability. I'm wondering, particularly in your position, when you have staff that get COVID, are they then not needing to have the vaccines?
That's correct. The, the recommend, the current recommendation is for staff or, or community members who have had COVID, that they wait 90 days before the vaccine. There is some evidence that people can be infected twice with COVID, most of those that have been well beyond 90 days after the first infection. And so, the, the current recommendation is to wait 90 days after the onset of the initial COVID illness, and then those individuals would be encouraged to be vaccinated, and we will be prepared to vaccinate that group of healthcare workers who were infected in, in the last months.
It is, it is surprising to see some areas in the state where the healthcare professionals don't want the vaccine. I mean, it, it's really hard to believe, you'd think if any profession would want that, it would be theirs, but I would think that that would then provide more vaccines for others beyond the healthcare, for example, our, our law enforcement, our teachers and such.
Thank you Supervisor. I, I would just like to point out that it, it does maybe make interesting press, interesting stories to publish that, but we have vaccinated over 1,500 healthcare workers, and the overwhelming majority of healthcare workers are very, very eager to be vaccinated, because the vaccine is both safe and effective. And I, I think that that should be an encouragement to the public, to see healthcare workers stepping up, not only willing, but very, very eager to get the vaccination.
Oh, yeah, you see huge lines of people, and they don't have a plan in place, they're putting these elderly individuals in lines trying to get vaccinated, but I'm really looking forward to our vaccine report.
Dr. Frankhauser, could I ask you in regards to hospital staffing? And maybe it's Steve Carroll, whoever would like to ask this. I'm concerned, we, we heard we've got the ambulances, we've got the hospitals, but it's actually the people that make the, make the patient care and so special, and I'm concerned that they are so stressed. I've gotten calls from doctors saying, please urge people to stay home. We've been working 10 days, 12 days, you know, full-time overnight, and nurses saying that we just can't do it anymore. I'm concerned that that's stressing, putting a stress on our hospital system. I'm, I'm sure it is, I can't be blind to it. And so, what is it that, is there anything we can do? Are we staffing okay? I, I know you guys are always thinking ahead of the game on this, but I just wanted to touch base on that, because it's, it's a lot on this industry. It's a lot on these people, and they're our friends and family.
And that's a critically important question. The, the response is fairly complex. It's, it's the content of two or three prolonged discussions or meetings every day at our hospital. But I, I would like to just say that that is huge, that, that we do require the public's help with that. Someone asked about trauma, our trauma numbers dropped dramatically in March and April after the first stay-at-home order, but they have not changed at all during the stay-at-home order. In fact, we have 17 trauma patients in the hospital right now. And so, really, to have the capacity to manage the patients that are falling ill with COVID, we need to see a reduction in other, other illnesses, those illnesses that are associated with recreation and, and driving and, and being out and about. And I think that, that the stay-at-home order is appropriate, and, and we really do need to encourage each other to stay at home. Staffing wise, we have done things that, that you've heard of, where we are basically reducing clinics, taking staff from clinics, bringing them back. We've reached out to retirees, brought them in. The state has a, an employment corps that we brought individuals into our system with, but your, your point is well taken, people are exhausted. We have patients holding in the emergency room for prolonged periods of time in the emergency room, nurses caring for those patients, and that's a, a level of intensity that is wearing on them. I spoke with a nurse this week who had put in 68 hours last week, 28 hours of overtime, and, you know, they do that because they're committed to the community, because they care about the people that they're serving, but that is not, not a sustainable pace, so.
Thank you, and then.
We really do need the help from the community.
Thank you, and Steve, if you can just hit on the other private hospitals as well, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John, thank you so much.
So, yes, the, I'll add that it is a significant concern for not only the hospital staff, but also for our first responders. Our fire, ambulance, and law enforcement are getting stressed, getting taxed, and, and they're getting sick. And so, we have challenges, when they get sick, somebody else has to fill that shift, and the same thing with the hospitals. When, when somebody calls in sick, somebody doesn't, you know, that, they can't not fill that shift. You know, we have to, you know, care for patients, we have to staff our, our response vehicles, and, and so we also are monitoring, and I have a very, very, very busy critical incident stress management team that is also working with our, our personnel, both the hospital level and the, the first responders, and they get a lot of calls from folks that are really challenged and really having a hard time right now. And so, we have a system that provides them with resources, provides them with people to talk to, directs them to, to services. So, we're watching them for the, you know, our, our individual providers and our workforce at that level too.
Thank you very much. Mr. Powers?
And related to these points, Chair Long and Board members, one of the things that, thank you so much, Steve, we're messaging to the community with our very robust social media platform through Ashley Batista, messages directly from the doctors and the nurses on the front lines in the hospital, with their pleas, pleas to the community to help bring the cases down and to follow the guidance. And so, I think our sense is that those are, are very effective, they're, they're so heartfelt from our wonderful staff.
I, I really do appreciate our, our county telling the story. People think it's not real, they don't know someone that works at the hospital system, or they don't know someone who has COVID, but those stories are really true, and I really appreciate us telling that, because it, it's very helpful, I think. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will turn it over to our Public Health Officer, Dr. Levin. Thank you.
Dr. Levin, how are you doing? Happy New Year.
What's that?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to everyone. Let me make sure I have this in order. All right. Okay.
So, while you're, while you're finding everything, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your advocacy on the state level with our public health and really making sure they understand the needs of Ventura County. Dr. Golly and Ana Manasantos and the, all the public health up there, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Happy New Year to all of you, and I hope it is a happy year. I want to talk about one of those things that might make it happier, and that is the COVID vaccine. COVID vaccine arrived in our county 20 days ago, with two holiday weekends intervening during that time period, and I estimate that since its arrival, that Ventura County has given approximately 13,000 shots into people's arms. We're getting more vaccine each week, but it is not enough to vaccinate as many people and as fast as we'd like to vaccinate them. We're also facing local challenges. Vaccinating people with the COVID vaccine is like, is not like vaccinating people with the flu vaccine. One of the two vaccines, the Pfizer vaccine, requires constant freezing at negative 70-degree temperature. We have only a handful of freezers in our county that are capable of reaching that lower temperature. This makes it hard to break into small units and distribute throughout the county. Let's say that problem was overcome. This vaccine is precious, in demand, unlike anything we've ever seen with the flu vaccine. So, between the temperature requirements, the vaccine's scarcity, and the requirement to give it to those who need it most, state government is keeping very close track of it, tracking every dose, and requiring any site that wants to administer it to sign up to be able to do so. Flu vaccine can be given in virtually any pharmacy. COVID vaccine cannot, at least not yet. It should be able to be in the near future. Flu vaccine can be given in any doctor's office. COVID vaccine cannot, and hopefully, you'll be able to access it that way as well at some point in the future. So, at first, we've been left with the hospitals giving it to their own workers. We have crews of vaccinators going out to skilled nursing facilities and other long-term care facilities to vaccinate people where they live, and we have sites that we're setting up in large buildings or tents where certain people can receive their vaccine. So far, we've given vaccine in our county to all the workers who wanted it in our A hospitals, and this has been the majority of our hospital workers. We've vaccinated the majority of the residents living in our skilled nursing facilities and project that this will be completed by the end of this week. Similar efforts are being made in the remaining 400 long-term care facilities in our county, and we hope to finish the remaining groups in our Phase 1 Tier 1 within the next two or three weeks. These include staff at psychiatric hospitals and dialysis centers, paramedics and EMTs, and those who will be vaccinating others in our county. In about two to three or four weeks, we'll begin with Phase 1A Tier 2 and see the start of the vaccination of staff and residents of intermediate care facilities, the staff of clinics and private doctors' offices, surgical centers, and jail medical staff, home healthcare and in-home supportive services, behavioral health outpatient staff, public health high-risk workers, community health workers, including promotoras, midwives, medical examiner and DA investigators, COVID testing and hotel site workers and dental offices. Following that, we'll enter Phase 1A Tier 3. This will probably begin in middle to late February, but of course, dependent on the availability of vaccine. In this tier are the workers in specialty clinics, laboratories, blood banks, pharmacies, and mortuaries and cemeteries, physical therapists and ombudsman for long care facilities. The next phase, Phase 1B, will include people 75 years of age and over, law enforcement, farm workers. law enforcement, farm workers, grocery store workers, fire department employees, emergency dispatchers, and the education sector, meaning our instructors, our teachers, and the workers at schools, childcare, public health, postal workers, jail custody staff, and child welfare workers. I'd like to believe this will occur in March, but again, this is dependent on vaccine supply. These individuals will be immediately followed by people 65 and older with health problems, workers in utilities, transportation, industrial, residential, and commercial sectors, and in critical manufacturing. The homeless and incarcerated individuals will also be included then. And in Phase 1C will be healthy individuals 65 to 74 years of age, persons 16 to 64 with underlying conditions, and other essential workers like those in water and waste management, defense and energy, communications, financial services, and government operations. And after this, everyone else aged 16 and older. We have top-level people in our county working on the distribution and administration of this vaccine all day, every day, since its arrival in our county. We planned for its arrival for weeks before it got here. This is my top priority, and those of many of the leaders in our county. We have a task force dedicated to getting you the vaccine as quickly as we can. I spoke with the top leadership in the state yesterday in an effort to get more vaccine than our usual allotment, and it seems there is some hope that that may happen as other counties are not able to request all the vaccine due to them because they're unable to administer it in their county fast enough. Thus, there's a sizable amount of vaccine sitting up at the state. We want all people in our county to have access to vaccinations and are working hard to move through each phase. We understand there are many vulnerable community members, essential workers, and many people in various sectors who need the vaccine. We ask for your patience and encourage the community to continue to follow the public health guidance so that we can save lives and save businesses. There is a vaccine subscribe option on the county's website now where people can go to subscribe for updates. So as we move through the phases, we can keep people informed. This will reassure you that progress is being made and keep you informed as to when your turn to be vaccinated has come. Are there any questions?
Yes. I really appreciate asking for more. We were on a call, Mr. Powers and I, on Saturday night with many supervisors and Dr. Golly and Ana Manasantos. And one of the supervisors was stating that they're not using all their vaccines. And I was like, raise our hand, we'll take them, send them down here. So I really appreciate working with the state on that. If we have the infrastructure to really get it out there, I really would appreciate that. Now, I know I'm not on that list to get a vaccine anytime soon, and I'm not going to ask for it. I did, however, go and get my flu shot, and I made sure my family got that. Is that still something that we're urging people to do? If they're not in the front line for getting the COVID, is it still very doable to make sure that you get your flu shot to asymptomatic? My staff was reminding me I was sick three times last year, really horribly, but not this year. And maybe it worked. So how do we advise people on that?
We really advise people every year strongly to get their flu shot. I think it's even more important this year. You can get both viral infections at the same time, and that would only make COVID's impact on an individual worse. And the other thing is, it can be confusing when you get the flu as to whether you have COVID or not. And so please, yes, go out and get your flu shots.
Thank you. Supervisor Ramirez, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. And first, I want to say, Dr. Levin, thank you for hanging in here with us. I knew, I know you weren't, this is something you necessarily signed up for. So I really do appreciate that, and all of your staff through this once-in-a-lifetime situation. You probably respond, you did respond to a question from a local acupuncturist about why he wasn't lowered down in the tier. Could you comment on that? This is a person who actually works with patients, who's got a license, who's a recognized professional.
Yeah, absolutely. I look to the state as to where to rank people. I think it's important that there's consistency county to county, and we do our very best to maintain that consistency. And decisions at the state level, I think, are made based on several things. One is, what are the chances that you're going to get COVID by the population that you're dealing with? Obviously, a hospital is a really high-risk place because it's a magnet for COVID patients. But other places where you deal with individuals may not be as high a risk. The other, another reason to get COVID is because, to get the vaccine, I'm sorry if I said COVID before, to get the COVID vaccine, is if you have conditions which put you at greater risk for having bad outcomes with COVID. And the state has to juggle these two things, and they're apples and oranges as to who should be higher up in the priority.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, I just want to be able to do whatever we can as a board to make sure that we can have this vaccine rolled out if it's sitting in our freezers and we have issues other than the fact that we don't have enough of them. If it comes down to distribution, you outline so many able-bodied individuals who are in that first tier that could come to you instead of having to, like, figure out how to distribute it out. A, B, we can do it 24 hours a day. I know people will sign up at 2:00 a.m. in the morning to go get that shot. So I hope we will really think out of the box to make sure that we don't have these vaccines sitting in a freezer while we're trying to distribute them to places that are then going to give the shots. I really hope we can think outside the box and be, you know, in the lead of all counties in the state and being able to, as quickly as possible, you know, get these administered. I really, really hope that we will be able to do that. And I know you have the task force. If there's anything our board of supervisors can do to assist this effort using the fairgrounds or whatever, I think we really need to get that rolled out. And then, secondly, as we look at these tiers, they're straight out of the state of California. But there are other criteria that I look at beyond just how risky it is and how you are, your potential of getting it. And that would be, there are really essential workers that are so important. And from law enforcement down to, you know, people in the grocery stores. And you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Powers, farm workers. But educators, we want to get these kids back in school. So I just, I hope that we will have some more fluidity, if you will, between the tiers, particularly when you have situations where we may be getting more, or there are those who don't need it, or those who do not want it. And I really hope that we can have a little more fluidity in the tiers. And most importantly, that we don't have any sitting in a freezer somewhere. I mean, we should be able to get them all out, you know, this week, done. And that's really what I would love to see. And like I said, if any way our board can take care of this, to assist this, I know that we're all behind you on doing that.
Supervisor, that's a really great point. Dr. Levin, can you also hit on the timing? How quickly can we roll through these phases?
Supervisor Parks, you just named so many good and important points. I feel like I could talk about them for a couple of hours. We've always felt tremendous support from county government. It's just, it's been wonderful. You've always been there for the people in your county the whole way on this, and it's appreciated. And it's made a difference. We are doing our best to move through vaccine as quickly as we can to distribute it. It is different, as I pointed out in my comments, than any other situation we've been in because we've been able to use sources like pharmacies and physicians' offices, clinics, to give vaccine and test. And we can't, so we've used hospitals. We've used pharmacies to go into SNFs and long-term care facilities. And we are setting up, we've set up the site in South Oxnard where people can get vaccine. By the end of this week, we'll have set up a site at the fairgrounds, which will increase that effort. We're looking at two more sites that we hope we'll be able to bring onboard in the following week. That may be ambitious. Those are in Thousand Oaks and Camarillo. And we have Von's Pharmacy, which has stepped forward to offer to immunize people in the pharmacies there, and there are 12 of those. Yesterday, there was one pharmacy approved. Today, there are seven pharmacies of those Von's pharmacies approved. So we expect to have all 12 by the end of the week. This will give us the capacity in our county to immunize about 5,000 people a day. The question is, how much vaccine is rolling into our county? We have an expectation of about 10,000 doses a week. And so we are hopeful that we can get additional extra vaccine from the state to do that. I am completely on board with you in wanting to get this vaccine into people's arms as quickly as we can.
Yeah, it is rather astounding when you look and see that where they're saying is the issue isn't the vaccine, but rather the ability to distribute it, to get it from the states to the county, the county to the arms of people. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that you're considering things like 24-hour-a-day administration, at least. I think that's out of the box, but it's something that, it's like wartime. People, you have to rally the people, people have to muster to do this most important thing that we can do in our nation right now. And so I just really look forward to seeing some unusually different ways of being able to do this. And it has to go to a 24-hour clock, in my mind. That is one of those ways. And also, community organizing, you know, but this is dentist organizing or pharmacist organizing so that you have a site, you just need to staff it. I'm sorry, but you know, this is really important. And I just really want to hear a plan about how we're rolling this out, and it's going to happen now, you know. And I'm hoping to hear that soon.
Mr. Powers?
I was just going to say, Supervisor, you have always been a source of not only great ideas, but encouragement during this, all the supervisors have. But I really appreciate your comments. We have a very aggressive leader in this right now, Barry Zimmerman. And we're talking already about expanding from five days a week to seven days a week. Again, the limitation is the vaccine. We are, there is an occasional voice at the federal level that says, we're going to have more vaccine. And in fact, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will probably, with any luck at all, be approved between the middle of February and end of February. And there are some people who say that we can make Moderna vaccine go twice as far. Others are now countering that today. But we'll see how that washes out in the end. But again, there are some federal voices that are optimistic about more and more and ample amounts of vaccine coming down the line. And if it does, we will take advantage of it. I like your idea very much of 24-hour-a-day vaccine. It would be such a luxury to have so much vaccine that we could actually do that. So thank you for, and then, please don't be reluctant to, and you haven't ever been, to bring up these ideas because they're really good ideas.
And I'm getting texts right now from people saying, I'll take the 3:00 a.m. slot, you know. So yeah, we definitely can do this 24 hours a day if we put our, all our efforts toward that. And just one last question. I think I read somewhere we have 10,000 sitting in a freezer. Is that about what we have on store that we need to distribute before the next batch comes?
We do have another batch coming that will be the second shots for people, pretty much dedicated for that. We do have about $10,000, $10,000, $10,000 doses of vaccine still in our freezer. But let me put that in perspective. If you look around, listen to the news, read the papers, you'll find that the majority, many, many states in this country have only been able to put 15% of vaccine in the arms of people. And that, if you listen to the news, you'll find that maybe the best has 40% success rate. We are at, to the best of my understanding, at a 52% success rate of getting this vaccine into people. And yes, we're anxious about getting that other 10,000 doses that we've got into people, and we're working on that right now.
Let me know if I can help.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone?
Help? Yeah. Thank you. Another good idea. So Mr. Zimmerman is here also to go over some logistics of the vaccine effort, which whenever your board is ready.
Okay. Let me just ask real quick from the other board members if you have any further questions from Dr. Levin before we move into testing and vaccine placement. Anyone on Zoom? I don't see anyone. Okay. You are clear. Thank you again. It's not an easy job to be our public health director. I really know that there's so much work that goes on that the public does not see. And so really appreciate you and staff and everybody working so diligently on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Levin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, we've heard so much about you. Happy New Year.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Welcome, Supervisor Ramirez. Glad to have you here. Just a few things. Dr. Levin did a very comprehensive review of kind of the vaccine and some of the activities going on. And just to add a few points there is that we are looking to build out the distribution model as robust as possible. As we learned, you can have an infrastructure in place, but if your supply lines aren't there, it causes compromises the system. So that's what was communicated today, that we are committed to building that framework. And Dr. Levin is committed to help feed that pipeline in there so we can communicate broadly, saying that we have access and open ability to move through these tiers rapidly. The tier structure is an integrity structure as policy given by the state. It is, takes some effort to do, to organize and get individuals here. It's not as, the vaccine process is not quite as open as just open access testing where you can come. There is registration activities that have to occur. Most efficiently is to have those registrations occur for these entities, such as the hospital signing up, giving us time slots, these type things in order to manage it because the manner in which we distribute the vaccine is a little bit more complicated in some regards, or there's more steps associated with it. So with that in mind, our goal is to get up to initially 5,000 capacity, to do 5,000 vaccinations per day. And we're still in Phase 1A, Tiers 1, 2, and 3 is our target population that we're working on. We will establish a new site that we're working on to set up this week. And so Monday at the fairgrounds, we should be opening up that for individuals to come in and start to be vaccinated as well. We already have a site at South Oxnard there. It's a two-lane with the capod area in which people can get it. And those are by individuals that are basically invited to participate in that, that meet the tier requirement. Also, we have a capacity within, at the public health facility in the North Oxnard area as well to do vaccinations. Current effort right now is leveraging institutions, hospitals, SNFs, those type things, and getting it out there as we build the network through the pharmacy system. So that gives a kind of just a logistical overview of it. Dr. Levin covered most everything else associated with it. One of the infrastructure issues, though, that we have to be aware of is the integrity of the cold storage associated with the vaccine. We do not want any mishaps associated with that. We do not want any mishaps associated with that, and we want a safe activity. As mentioned on the website, those who are interested in receiving updates automatically can go and, and subscribe to that. That's at the Ventura County, VenturaCountyRecovers.org. Under the, the vaccine section, you're able to do that. In addition, we had some comments about those that are capable of, of providing the vaccine and helping us out distribute that, especially if we go to a 24-hour activity associated with that. We will need qualified individuals that can administer a, a shot. The, the state is, today we were supposed to receive the final guidance associated with the criteria associated with giving and administering a shot and what, what standards we need to uphold in that health arena. So as soon as we finalize that, we will have a mechanism in place in which we can solicit individuals either through association activities or by some kind of contact to us to aggregate that and to assure that they are qualified to administer those vaccines.
So Barry, as someone comes to one of these sites, how do we know or verify that they need to receive it? Does their work give them a piece of paper? Are we sending them a text? How, how does that work?
Yeah, so right now, there is a validation activity that, that occurs associated with people at the vaccination sites. So at the institutions, let's say at, at a hospital, it would be based on their employee registry, that they would have a registration employee listing and their emails associated with that were notified on how to get registered. And so that's the integrity associated with that. Badges are checked when they come in, that you are who you say you are. And, and so there's a protocol associated with that. As we get more and more into the community, let's say pharmacies that are administering vaccines and so forth, we will have to have, maintaining the integrity of the tiered structure and how we're phasing it out, we will be asking for some kind of documentation or some kind of identifying activity in order to say you're qualified at this phase to get the vaccine.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering about the potential of using the experts at our naval base? If, if there is any possibility they could help us with administering the vaccine? And also, I think the state has recently allowed nursing students to get more time doing this kind of work. Are either of those potential volunteers that could assist us?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's been statements by the state to say nursing students, and what we, what we need is the official guidance from them. Right now, in administration of medications like that, a nursing student may need proctoring on a one-to-one basis. What we need is the guidelines to say, it could be one to three, so it makes it a practical exercise. There, there are little nuances, but we appreciate any, any ideas that come forward, how we can implement that in a safe fashion.
And I hope you will connect with the base, just to see if that's a possibility as we look at the potential of a, a major rollout, having naval base Ventura County right here. And we've had such wonderful partnerships with them in the past, they, they could be a wonderful source.
Absolutely, I made, I made a note of that to, to have someone reach out.
Thank you. I was just, even the CBs, you know, they're, they're experts at being able to set up portable sites. So we got to use everything we have, any resource we can use, because we need to roll it out. Thank you.
Along with that, on our Navy base, do they have their own vaccine supply that they're providing? Or are they utilizing ours?
I don't know.
Does anyone know? I just, I know in-
Government is managing their workforce associated with the military. I, I don't see it in our state guidance of where, where that fits in, so I would assume they're managing that.
Okay, I, I do know that our Navy base has been doing very well in regards to the COVID-19 and working with us. I know in other counties, they're not as, not working as well. So I am proud, proud to hear that. Supervisor Leveer or Huber, do you have any questions before we move on to the testing? Supervisor Parks?
Yes, Mr. Zimmerman, I, I did want to follow up with the question regarding the, what I referred to as fluidity between the tiers. When you find that you have the ability to have vaccine that's not being used completely in those tiers, that we could move down the, the line and have the ability, particularly like educators and law enforcement that fall further down?
Yeah, I mean, what we're, what we're doing is allowing that flexibility within the, the 1, 2, 3 tier structure today. And so that, that's how we're, we're maximizing the slots and the use of, of the vaccine. The, the, the idea and the hope is that we can secure enough supply chain to, to do a high volume. That will give us greater flexibility to deal with the acceleration and overlapping tiers, if possible, there. But we'll consider all those, those options very much so.
Hearing Dr. Levin talk about one of the obstacles is the need for the, you know, intense freezer to, to hold the vaccine. And so that, obviously, those type of freezers aren't everywhere. But where they are, you know, I think people come to them.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have the capacity for the freezer storage space. And that's why we're working with the state to get our, our supply here sufficient enough to feed us through our infrastructure. So we, we have the capacity, I think estimated where we could be about 200,000 dosages in our freezer system today. And so, so that's what we're saying is that setting up an infrastructure, we have to have the supply line in order to do it. And that's what our argument is with the state. There is some issues though, we can, we can store it in our freezer system. Its distribution to the locations and stuff need to be managed appropriately. We have established contracts and, and deals with dry ice companies already, that was months ago, in order to guarantee we have the right cold storage supplies. So, so we're, 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 we're hardening, I would say, the infrastructure in order to get this in place. One of the key elements is the consistency of the vaccine to come in. And that's where a little bit, even in our starting that we're at 50-some percent here, we, we were rolling out, but not guaranteed if we were going to get X quantity or Y quantity, you know. And, and so, so we're trying to stabilize that out. That is a huge variable for us to really, you know, staff, open up, schedule, those type things. So I'm encouraged that we're, we're getting there with, with that, and hopefully that will stabilize it. So I, I think that, you know, we have to be sensitive that it is more complicated due to the skull, the cold storage chain there. But we have built capacity to accept it and be a recipient of those vaccines.
And I appreciate that.
Excellent information to have, because that wasn't clear. And I'm, thank you very much for making that clear. Could you also explain a little bit more, what is it that you mean when you say 50%?
Well, right now, the Phase 1A Tier 1. And, and so we've, we've distributed vaccines to all the hospital systems, which is the acute care, thank you, to the acute care or basically primary acute care hospital situations in which they're vaccinating their staff. We heard from Dr. Fankhauser indicate, you know, in, in the VCMC network associated with that phase, about 1,500 staff have received that vaccine, and that's the first dose of that. All the other hospitals are doing that as well. So that's the target universe that we're looking with, as well as the skilled nursing facilities, of which various people are helping to take care of them. Of that universe of people, we're about 50% done with, with them on, on the first dose. Some of those are already into the second dose phase. So starting actually later this week and next week, we'll be doing second dose of those that were early on. So we kind of have two, two activities going at all times. We have an initial population that we, we, we target, we vaccinate, start the next one. And then Phase 2 of the initial one needs to come in and, and do that. So it's a compounding network of it. So it's not a one, one pass-through in it. It's a tracking in order to now get you into the second and build the capacity for the second wave to come in. So that, that's kind of the logistical structure that we're, we're, we're juggling in order to, to expand this out, in order to get larger and larger populations served.
Thank you, Barry.
It is interesting that they're looking at, in some places in the United States, only doing the first shot to as many people as they can and dealing with the second shot at a, at a, you know, as it comes. But it, it looks like we're, we're as a state, going to continue with the, making sure that we have doses for the second shot going to the people who got the first shot, instead of spreading that further, right?
That's correct.
And I appreciate you, you came to us last year in regards to funding for the refrigerators to make sure that we were going to have the storage that we needed. And to be able to have the safety factor larger, so that we can hold so many vaccines, more than what the state is giving us, is really important. Because obviously, this is not going to be the only year we're dealing with this. It's going to be continuing, and hopefully we won't have to use the special freezers, and they'll come out with new science, and it'll be better, and we won't have to do two shots, and we can do only one shot. But it's a lot of organization. And so thank you for really looking out for that. I, I know logistically with the hospitals and clinics, that's huge. Tomorrow, we're having a press conference, and we're going to be doing our second round of the first four people, five people, that got their shot the first time. And that's how many weeks later? So there's this lag time, then you have to follow up with those people, and you have to make sure. So how many, how many were there?
21.
21, okay. But at the press conference, there was how many? It doesn't matter.
Four individuals.
It doesn't matter, and my math is going crazy. But anyways, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know you guys have been thinking about this ahead of time, more than our public is. They hear a shot and say, okay, I can go get it now. There's more to that, and I really appreciate the action plan that you're providing us.
Just to, if I may, Chair.
Yes.
I've just, and Supervisor Parks' points, and really appreciate the supportive comments and the ideas. Just so you know, to, for our board and our community, as I say, from the get-go, we have worked to over-resource this effort, whatever this team needs in terms of funding, equipment, staffing, logistics, whatever it is. Right now, we've set aside $5 million in funds for the effort. We have more if we need it. There's more federal money coming in the new CARES 2.0 bill. And any roadblock that is faced, we jump on it immediately, because this is our, this is our number one priority. And that's also why we set up the task force this way, so we can have the logistical expertise of OES, of HCA, and the financial and administrative support of, of our office. So we will pledge to give it everything we've got. Would that maybe, Barry, give us an update on testing?
Sure, thank you. And more, more to come on vaccines, no doubt, on our updates. Real quick on testing, obviously, we'd love the vaccine activity to kick in to change this test, testing profile that we have here. But as you can see graphically, we're still at high volumes. We've dipped a little bit, but those are with holiday weeks that, that are in there. We did shut down during Christmas for a couple of days to give a little bit of respite to the, the staff that are running these sites. All locations are open, as, as Mike indicated earlier. We have secured our supply structure, so we don't have gaps in the, the volume or testing capacity. So all, all are open for seven days a week. At this point, we still are on a no appointment, open access activities at this time. Wait times do fluctuate significantly due to demand in the, in the community comes and goes. Most of our sites today were under an hour, so the throughput's improving as we get more and more stable with our new laboratory. That's, that's at three of our locations. The only outlier was Santa Paula. We had some technical issues that delayed the opening of that, which then backlogs the, the people waiting for that there. We have three sites, as I mentioned, on the Folgen system that, that requires pre-registration. You can access that information on your, any phone that connects to the internet. Or you can do that, pre-register for a day. That is on our website, VenturaCountyRecoveries.org. Or you can go to vcCOVID.com, which also gives you the, the registration. It is both in English and Spanish for maximum access. You can register in line. If you don't have access to those things, we will accommodate there as best we can on the site to do it. They have that capacity to register. So we continue to do that. We have our mobile teams out in various communities on, on a regular basis and, and hard-to-reach locations as well. Just to give you a profile, this map is kind of a heat map of the total testing access by community, based on zip code. There, our highest volumes are through the Oxnard region, Simi Valley, and then Ventura in the O3 zip code there. We would anticipate this is where we've concentrated a lot of our efforts. They're high densities in these actually zip code regions here. And in Simi Valley was our original hotspot of the county during the, the original pandemic. And so we, we, we still see high activity out in the East County due to that origin. So that, that's our, our efforts on, on testing right now, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor it and, and make it as accessible to the individuals as possible.
Well, I would like to take this opportunity to let the board members know what a fabulous job Barry Zimmerman and his staff and our public health have been doing. On Christmas Eve, we were reached out to by, in my office, for myself, by Steve Gama, council member at Port Wynimi, stating that two members of a 60-unit senior center called in Port Wynimi were tested positive. And how quickly can we get them help that they need in this senior facility? I wanted to shout out to Hannah Edmondson and her Public Health Department nurse, who reached out immediately, drove down there, took out home samples for everyone to do, to make sure that they were quickly tested. It wasn't, hey, I know it's Christmas Eve, we're all busy celebrating, let's, let's just wait till the next day. It was honestly just very impressive how quickly it was gone out and that their home tests were taken and that their community's needs were met. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. It was very, I'm very proud of our team, of how they just go over and beyond what we need to do for our community. And it was completely appropriate. And I wanted to just say thank you very much, because all those residents really just really appreciate it, and I do too.
Thanks for those comments, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. And now I'd like to hear from our community liaison, Rosa Gonzalez, on our outreach to low-income, high-density communities. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. CEO Powers, Rosa Gonzalez, community liaison for the CEO office. Today, I'd just be highlighting some of the county's efforts in regards to health equity efforts and also outreach. Some of them have already been highlighted, but I also would like to take this time to expand on some of the information for the public also to be aware of. As CEO Powers had shared before regarding our test locations, the Santa Paula and Oxnard College locations are high volume. But in addition to those two, and the Moore Park, Camarillo, Freedom Park, and the Ventura County Fairgrounds, also our healthcare agency's mobile COVID pop-up testing team for the month of January has about 18 additional community pop-up locations that make it easy for members of our community to access. Those would include Our Lady of Guadalupe, Mary's Star of the Sea, and Nylde Promised Food Distribution in the Oxnard area. In addition to that, we also have Fillmore Middle School. Recently in the past, we also had some in Thousand Oaks and also in other parts of the East County. Another, another highlight of our county efforts is the fees that have been waived at our clinic and urgent care office facilities related to COVID and respiratory symptoms. This has been a tremendous benefit for a lot of members in our community, especially our farmworkers that otherwise would have been hesitant to seek medical care. Our farmworker team, our health service, human services, our healthcare agency, and our county PIOs have really made sure that this information has been shared with our residents and especially in Spanish, English, and our indigenous languages, for our farmworkers to also know that this option is available. And this information has also been shared with various community partners that we have regular meetings and discussions with since COVID has begun. This would include CAS, Mycop, Lideres Campesinas, Poder Popular, and just a variety of others that participate in these meetings. And the information is also very beneficial within those areas in which these community partners could also help us bridge some of that information gap to, within the community. Our human services agency is also providing prevention and testing information via email and, I'm sorry, via mail to Medi-Cal recipients, and that is to over 275,000 recipients each time. That is a large number of members in our community that have, that HSA has direct contact to provide them the information and ensure that they have this information on hand. provide them the information and ensure that they have this information on hand regarding any sort of support that they need from the county for COVID. Additionally, our, there's direct outreach at our businesses with our business ambassadors. This is a county-wide effort. The information that also is provided to these businesses is available in Spanish and English, which ensures that there's proper social distancing measures are being followed by also those that are, that are attending or going to these businesses. Video messaging is going on in English and Spanish and shared on social media, website, and WhatsApp from our Farmworker Resource Program, but also our various county PIOs. That includes Human Services, Healthcare Agency, also our AAA, our Area Agency on Aging also providing this information to our residents. There's bus advertisements. There's also advertisements at the bus shelters. There's billboards in key areas of Oxnard, Santa Paula, Fillmore, Camarillo, and Ventura that also includes digital billboards along the 101 freeway, which is very heavily traffic area as a lot of people commute with taking that 101 freeway. So we feel that that's a great way to get that information out as people are driving. There's also, this information is also available at supermarkets, on the shopping carts, at the hand sanitizing stations, and also playing inside the locations themselves on the radio channels. So as people are shopping for groceries, they are also listening to some of these messaging. That's very important to get down to the community. Our farmworker outreach is really important. We have over 41,000 farmworkers and a lot of times we face some barriers in providing some of the issue, I'm sorry, some of the outreach information to them. And we could have a variety of different issues that we don't otherwise see specifically with just our Spanish-speaking community. So one of the great things is our county has indigenous language information also going out in Puebla Picha, Mixteco, and Zapoteco. That is also being supported from our ag commissioner's office, our AAA agency, healthcare agency, and especially our Farmworker Resource Program. Our cultivating health and agriculture has really made a great difference in which our farmworker program and our county doctors go out to local farms and provide COVID information and also information regarding our Logrando Bienestar program, which provides mental health services in Spanish and indigenous languages in support for our Spanish and indigenous communities. They also provide other critical resource information that some, that might also help our farmworkers and their families in addition to COVID information. Also sometimes available programs that are available, such as recently we had our, our Farmworker Household Assistance Program. That was very successful in which 3.5 million went out in thousand-dollar grants to over 3,400 farmworker households. And again, that was a collaborative effort from our ag community, being our growers and our community partners such as Mycop and also our Farmworker Resource Program. Our ag commissioner's office and also our Farmworker Program, along with various community partners and our growers, also if you recall at the beginning of COVID, also worked together to put out the Ventura County Agriculture Advisory. This has been something that the information has gone out to all our local farms and has really provided some guidance on best practices on farms for our farmworkers to practice social distancing while working. There's also been culturally competent communications and outreach in Spanish and indigenous languages on these, on these farms. When our cultivating health goes out to visit these farms also, or if anybody contacts our Farmworker Resource Program themselves, anybody that immediately starts speaking one of the indigenous languages, our team is able to identify and provide them the assistance that they need. Our public health has partnered up with our Community Promotoras Partnership with Lideres Campesinas, our South Winds Council, in Oxnard, Poder Popular, and once the Palavés. Again, our promotoras are helping us with getting the information out in key areas and ensuring that, that those residents within these key communities are also getting the information as it's critical regarding updates on testing location, food distribution sites, but also just good COVID-related prevention measures. Our Agriculture Commissioner's Office has distributed well over one million surgical masks to growers. They've also distributed over forty-nine large pallets of hand sanitizer and gloves. They make this available for all our growers anytime to come and pick up at any of their locations in Camarillo or in Santa Paula. And also, they have worked with our community partners such as Mycop and Lideres Campesinas to make sure that these are also available to them for distribution out in the community. Our public health team has also visited H2A housing to ensure that they are also following COVID guidance, but also providing the resource and the tools and any information that is needed. And also, our ag commissioner and our Farmworker Resource Program facilitated the bilingual training of the new CALLOSHA regulation regarding COVID and ag workers. They facilitated this training a few months ago with the help of our ag commissioner. We got the information out to all our growers. I think it was over 1,500 growers and to, to have them participate and also get that information so that they could also share with their employees, but also our Farmworker Resource Program and also various community partners are also doing the same. And we continue to have a very robust public outreach, you know, information from our PIOs and led by Ashley Bautista in which there's a lot of culturally competent communication on the radio, newspaper ads, as I mentioned, bus ads, billboards, electronic signs, but also in group chats that are also on Facebook. And I am happy to answer any questions.
I, I just, it's very impressive how much we do for so many of our populations. I do think that the reason we've been able to act so quickly with our farmworkers and, and with our vulnerable population is because we have that partnership way beyond. It was, you know, before COVID hit, I think we've had that strength in the community and with our leaders to make sure that we're advocating and doing what we need, what our community needs us to do. I received an email from Mike Powers in regards to all the different items that we are doing for this community that you highlighted today. Really do appreciate. It's, it's a team effort. We know from the Santa Paula Hospital's Blue Ribbon Committee talking about the trust that for our community to get the help they need, they have to trust us. And that always is, that isn't always there due to your background and, and what you've gone through before. And so to be able to really trust that this test is free, trust that you can get this food that you need so desperately. So much trust is there. And thank you for even working, for working with the churches and, and the after-school programs and all those to get our children and our families the, the help they need. As we know, many of this population live closely together for whatever reason. And when we know that you can't social distance, COVID can spread quickly. We've seen it at the H2A housing that we've had where 200, you know, people got COVID so quickly and our public health was there to help out. And so I really do want to make sure people reach out to us. If you do hear from a growers' point of view or a farmworker or a community, any community member, that you reach out to us because public health is not here to reprimand, but to assist. And so thank you very much for, for highlighting all this today. Supervisor Parks, I see that you have some questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosa, so much for the great work that you're doing in outreach. And we're seeing in some places that there is concerns about getting the vaccine, not understanding the importance of it and, and the safety of it. Are there efforts that we're doing in regards to help educate on the, the safety, the safety of the vaccine?
Yes, we are participating in discussions in the vaccine rollout planning, but also just already sharing the message that the vaccine is safe and also how, and what to expect in the coming months. I know that there's a lot of interest, especially within our central worker and farmworker communities, and we're working strongly within those, with those, with those advocates, but also the ag community, the, the workers, and also the ag industry itself to make sure that the information is available. The county's participating in numerous weekly phone calls with all of these partners for months at a time. And every, every meeting, we provide some sort of an update. And now, of course, the vaccine is one of the bigger topics. And as we start creating more content for this rollout, we'll definitely, again, have to have a different way of looking at it for our farmworkers and our Spanish-speaking community to ensure that some of that messaging that goes out, it's, 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 it's well-received and understood what, 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 how safe this is. Because there is a lot, sometimes mistrust within certain communities when it comes to vaccines. So we want to make sure that we're aware of that and also culturally sensitive in the way that we're providing that messaging.
Thank you. And definitely need to look at it in their lens.
Yes.
And we may want to look at some highly respected members and their communities who can come and speak with them about the importance too. But I know you're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. I think the last few months, one of the things that really has made this where we're at so successful, I think, is our, is the trust and partnerships that we've had with our community for, before COVID, but even stronger now during COVID. We participate in so many community calls, some that the county hosts, but also we've been welcomed to join other calls. And I think that also shows that there is an understanding of having us present at the table to, to share information, but also for us to benefit in hearing from the community. Any ideas, any thoughts? That has been very helpful and also our efforts. And in the end, it really is a true United Ventura County effort that we need, and that's what we've been doing the last few months.
And this is also with the Farm Bureau and the USDA is a highlight on this. So I think with our program for farmworkers with COVID, the state was looking at us and, and what was working here because we know the Central Valley needed assistance. And that was huge. Congratulations. I mean, for the state to, to know what we're doing and, and really applaud us, I think is great. And then to have the federal side of the USDA and so forth coming in and really assisting. They know this population needs assistance and, and education and, and all of that, just like everyone does. So appreciate the work. It's been good. Matt, Supervisor Lavier.
Thank you.
I can call you so many things today.
It's, no, no questions. I just wanted to, to thank Rosa and Ashley and the ag commissioner's office and everybody on the county team who is working to further these efforts because they are just a critical part of our response and our recovery. And it's really important the public sees everything we as, at the county are doing to work on these important efforts. So thank you, Rosa, and everyone else you mentioned.
Thank you. Supervisor Ramirez.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Rosa. And I've been following all along what the county's been doing. It's been really good. Many people contact me and say, why Oxnard has such high levels? And of course, you hit the nail on the head when you said the way people live and it's basically poverty, lack of adequate housing, and all the things, underlying equity problems that exacerbate this terrible situation. So really appreciate. Obviously, there's things that we can't immediately fix. One of the things I wanted to ask you about was I know that a lot of growers use farm labor contractors so that the actual farmworkers are actually employed by a contractor, not the grower. And I'm, I'm wondering what the outreach has been to those contractors.
They are also included in our outreach efforts, especially for those in which our, are with our, our ag commissioner's office has our outreach, their contact information. So they also receive a lot of the updates that are going out from their office. But also, we've had them contact us, especially for like our cultivating health program, once they find out that the county has these programs available. A huge benefit has been having Farm Bureau really support the Farmworker Resource Program and highlight it also within their newsletters and their meetings. I think those are the areas too where really finding various avenues to get the information out of what is available. And also, it just helps with that trust in reaching out with the county because when we have some of these visits, people sometimes do think growers, it's these large, larger kind of farms where they would have hundreds of workers. But we also have smaller ones that also need the same amount of support, that maybe have a dozen or two dozen workers. And we want to make, we make sure that that, those farms are also, and the labor contractors are also contacted and know of the services and, and the support that they could get from the county in regards to supporting our farmworkers.
And, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I'm, I always encourage people to do is some of the federal programs and even state firms are not available to a lot of our farmworkers because of their immigration status. And that is something that causes me a lot of pain. So I want to always encourage people to contribute to those nonprofits that do serve these essential workers who are here doing the work, providing the food on our table. And I'm, I'm a big contributor, to the extent I can, to the 805 undocu fund, which does help people with those needs for programs that they're not always eligible for. So I, I wanted to just do a shout-out. That's administered by the Ventura County Community Foundation, and they could use everybody's help. Thank you.
No, absolutely. And you're right about our farmworkers not being avail, eligible for some programs out there, but also their hesitation if maybe they read in a document that it requires ID of some sort of proof of, you know, a license or an ID. That's also another barrier hesitation that they would, you know, have in maybe going out to access some of this, available, some of these available resources. So very early in April, the county, along with the, our, with the farm advocates and also the growers, we created an essential worker ag work card that is, that was voluntary, but it helps them and was, it was distributed through their employee. And what, they've also been able to use that when they go to, say, food distributions, the test locations, or anywhere they go if they also feel that they want to provide, if they need to provide some sort of documentation proving that they're maybe a Ventura County resident without feeling, you know, any sort of hesitation to accessing that information. So I know like our Farmworker Resource Program has really highlighted that that is always an option that they could also use when accessing some of these services.
Agreed. And I really just, I know they're not here, but they've left a legacy Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Zaragoza for really pushing hard on our Farmworker Resources Program. It's been serving our county just wonderfully since its inception. We got a lot of great feedback from our farmers and then our farmworkers and everyone in between. And I think today with our result with COVID and what's going on has really been because of them. And so I do want to say thank you. I know that our board supported that. So thank you.
This is Bob Huber. I just want to say that, Rosa, thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Huber. I apologize. I missed you. Any other comments for Ms. Gonzalez? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Rosa. Yes, just a couple more slides here. So thanks for hanging in there with us. Just, we touched on this earlier, comparison with Southern California region. The numbers aren't where we want them to be, of course, but just so there is comparison and the questions came up earlier about sort of how is this happening statewide and what do we look like? And in general, we're doing better than pretty much all the Southern California counties to the south of us. And you can see there, you know, we're, we're lagging a bit behind Santa Barbara and San Luis, which are smaller counties. But again, this isn't anything we are happy about. It's just to sort of put it in context of how we're, just how widespread this, this pandemic is. And some of the numbers, particularly in LA, Riverside, and San Bernardino are, are just stunning. So, which is also one of the reasons why we think it's more appropriate that we are part of a tri-county region with Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo counties. As I say, that has still been something that we are continuing to advocate for, but it's not on the front burner at the moment with the numbers as high as they are. But as the weeks go on and we do hit the peak and start to turn it around, we will, we will continue to advocate for that. And now, of course, we want to talk about efforts to support our businesses here. So I'll turn it over to Paul Staber. Thank you.
And with the tri-county, I do want to note that the state does recognize that our numbers are not as huge as the rest of the Southern California region. So I appreciate their acknowledgement of that.
So I appreciate their acknowledgement of that.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, Board Members, CEO Powers, Paul Stamper with the County Executive Office. Here to give you an update on some of the federal, state, and local business assistance that's available now. We're in a rapidly changing environment, so it's very important for everyone to stay up to date on this. December 22nd, the federal COVID-19 relief bill was signed. And so this first slide highlights some of those different relief allocations. You can see here that right around 50% of that allocation was for small businesses and unemployment benefits. And then, of course, there's, I'll provide more details on those coming up, but this slide also references the $600 stimulus checks, which will be going out and funding to other areas such as schools, those essential public health activities that we've been talking about today. There's also money for rental assistance, which will be coming through our state, and broadband with a focus on underserved areas and so, and, and more. But that just gives you a, an overview of the items included in the federal relief bill. Wanted to focus more specifically on business assistance related to that. So the Paycheck Protection Program is coming back in round two, and $284 billion has been allocated for this. So by comparison, the first time the PPP rolled out, that included, let's see, 522 billion. So this represents a little more than half of what was in the first round. And again, that first round, for our county specifically, meant that 11,000 of our businesses received grants, and that totaled over a billion dollars into our community. So this is definitely going to have a big impact for us, and we'll be working hard to help make sure our community gets as much as possible that's available for us. So a few more details around this PPP too. So for those that, businesses that already did receive a grant, there is a possibility for a second draw to come back and receive another grant, and that is available for businesses that have less than 300 employees and have experienced a revenue loss of 25% or more. And then those first-time applicants this time around, yes, it does include businesses and nonprofits, and expands eligible expenses for what the money can be used for. Additionally, it recognizes how impact has been particularly hard on hotels and restaurants. And so the traditional two and a half times the monthly payroll is, is there, but for those hotels and restaurants that can go up to three and a half times monthly payroll for their total allotment. It also simplifies the forgiveness process for loans under $150,000 to a single-page, very quick process. And there's a change to the check, to the tax implications, and expenses can now be deducted, which they could not be for a previous first round of PPP. So we're at the stage now, we're still awaiting Treasury guidance and SBA to issue regulations. The bill specified that they would have 10 days from adoption to do that, so that has us looking at January 6th for information. So we will be watching that very closely. Along with the PPP, this federal funding included money for economic injury disaster loans, $20 billion, six months extensions for existing SBA loans, and employee retention tax credits that are options for qualifying companies. It also provided specific industry sector support in certain areas. Here are some examples of that for airlines, $16 billion. Live venue operation, operators, that includes live performances as well as places like museums and theaters where $15 billion was set aside. And so this program will be run through the SBA also. And early indicators say that they will initially prioritize those that experience 90% loss, and then have a tiered process after that for applications. So farmers in agriculture, $13 billion, and then recognition for childcare centers as well, and the importance of that. And so $10 billion, which can be used for grants, tuition, business expenses, et cetera. And then, again, when we talk about business assistance, we're not just talking about companies, we're talking about workers as well, and how every business is made up of people with their jobs and their livelihood. And then there's some specific items that were assistance directly for workers. So this included $300 unemployment bonus or additional amount of money on top of what they're receiving on unemployment for a 10-week period of time now through March 13th. Pandemic unemployment assistance was extended as well. And also the eviction moratorium, which was set to expire on December, at the end of December, is now extended to January 31st. Yes, please.
Supervisor Ramirez, go ahead.
Maybe you're going to talk about this, so forgive me I stepped on your presentation, but eviction moratorium, how about, is there any relief for our landlords who haven't been getting paid in this legislation?
An excellent question. There, there is nothing in there right now for the landlords, no. As it happens, the state also has its own eviction moratorium protections, and part of that allows for owners to pursue through small claims court reimbursement. So that, that's what's on the table right now.
Thank you.
And that's an excellent question to ask the state to advocate for, is our, our property owners as well as those that are being renting. Now, I understand the U.S. Small Business Administration has extended it to December 31st, 2021 for small business loans. Is that correct? Or is that just the funding for our counties?
I'm not clear on which assistance.
Um, just, you were talking about the Small Business Assistance Program, the Paycheck Protection. There's all these loans and programs for our businesses. And I understand the, the deadline was moved from December 31st, 2020 to now 2021, I believe.
Okay, so I think you're referring to all the CARES funding, which extended it out for a year for eligible CARES expenses. Whereas the SBA-specific, these will be new PPP loans, which will have their own separate duration.
Okay. All right. And then we'll make sure then our business assistance under VenturaCountyRecoveries.org, that all that information is there. So if you're a business, you can go there to make sure you're getting the funding that is available to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And so I, I will review those at the end, but we always have this information updated at VCRecoverts.org with links to our partners as well, who are direct service providers and can help them navigate some of these more specifically.
Thank you. Any other supervisor questions before I have him continue? Not seeing anyone pop up on my screen, so go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so then, so moving on from federal assistance to state and local assistance. California introduced several assistance approaches for our businesses. It included sales tax extensions and interest rate payment arrangements, making those easier for businesses to get. Hiring tax credits, businesses with under 100 employees can receive up to 1,000 per employee if they meet the eligibility criteria. And then the program I want to highlight through the state right now is the California Relief Grants. And so right now, applications are being accepted by the state for this grant program. So the original deadline to submit your application was January 8th. That was just extended to January 13th. So we're still in this application period. So let me talk a little bit more about the program. The program includes grants for businesses, small businesses, in amounts of either 5,000, 15,000, or 25,000. It's a tiered structure based on total revenue, and the eligibility requirements includes businesses that earn anywhere from 1,000 to 2.5 million dollars. So the state has set aside $475 million funding, and that will be divided up, half in each of two rounds for recipients. It's not first come, first served. Instead, they've identified a priority for selection, so we want to encourage everyone that may meet these eligibility requirements to apply. And some of the things the state will be looking at are impacted areas across the state following the COVID blueprint, impacted industry sectors that have been particularly hit hard, as well as businesses owned by minorities, veterans, and businesses located in low to moderate income areas. So all of those are some of the criteria they will look at as they select from the applicants. They're expecting it to be oversubscribed, but we, we want to make sure that everyone that might be eligible explores this possibility, particularly to do it now, because then you will have a chance to be selected in both rounds. Anyone that applies for this round but is not selected will roll over and be included in the second round for that consideration. So the state guidance includes, or eligibility requirements includes other factors. They are both for businesses and nonprofits. You need to have a physical address and operate in California, be in operation since June 1st of 2019, have experienced impacts from COVID. And again, that gross revenue constraint from 1,000 to 2.5 million. Governor Newsom also announced this week that on Friday, he's planning to announce additional business support through the state, so we, we'll be watching that closely and communicating it out as well. Want to talk a little bit about our, our Ventura County Business Grant Assistance Program. So we completed this first program, and we're in the process of standing up a second business grants program, which will be funded with $20 million from our county budget. We are going to be coming back to your board next week for conceptual approval, where we'll present our recommendations and invite your feedback and direction on how that program is structured. But we're, we're essentially right now, we're looking at how our, our previous grant program was structured, and the things that worked and didn't work. And we're also comparing that to the new state relief grants, because we recognize that, boy, wouldn't it be great and easier if, the more that our program mirrors the state program, it would be that much easier for people to apply for both. So we're keeping that under consideration as we develop that. And again, we'll be bringing that back to your board next week and inviting your input and direction before finalizing anything. But I, I want to touch on some summary items here. So there's a lot happening right now, okay? And a lot's changing very quickly. And so we want to make sure that, we, we've got, we're doing the full court press, right? We've got all of our chambers, cities, county, our, our EDC Roundtable Group, everyone is talking regularly, meeting regularly, and communicating out to their different constituents all this information. I have three specific things that I want to recommend for businesses, and then I'll invite any questions that you may have. So first of all, stay informed so you don't miss any opportunities, and do that first by going to VCRecoverts.org. We have the assistance program descriptions there, we have links to our partners in the community, and there's also a link to our VCReopens.com there, which is where you can register. Over 15,000 businesses in Ventura County have registered there already, and they are now benefiting from that by getting regular updates as this situation evolves and as resources and programs become available for businesses. And then number two, take advantage of our community direct service providers. Want to highlight the example of ED Collaborative at edcollaborative.com. So they have a COVID-19 State and Federal Resource Guide on their website. They conduct regular multiple webinars throughout the week. They have free consulting and advising. Really want you to take advantage of that, and they offer technical assistance related to the California Relief Grant Program and PPP and other programs to help you successfully apply for those. And then thirdly, focus right now on the California Relief Grants, because there's a ticking clock right now. There's a deadline, and so we want as many people as possible to take advantage of that. So if you go to ca-reliefgrant.com, that's where you can find all the information, you can find an application guide, there are recorded webinars that you can watch on demand. You can also link to the application online from there and fill it out. And again, that is for businesses and nonprofits, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Supervisors, questions for Mr. Stamper? Not seeing any on this screen. Paul, just really appreciate the, working with the, the different groups that we're trying to get, like EDC with Bruce Densley, he's been here and talking in regards to their advocacy with our businesses. I know how tough it is right now from our stay-at-home order, where so many businesses were closed, or the outdoor service was closed completely. It's only takeout and order for restaurants. We've been having our Great Plates Program to try and support the businesses. The commitment of our board to really help our, our businesses as well has been great. So thank you. I was going to ask you, how are we touching base with these businesses that might, you know, be just so disappointed that they're, they're not able to work? How do we get them more funding? And so you answered by the email, so thank you. I wanted to make sure we were outreaching, and you, of course, are doing it. So I really do appreciate the work that everyone's doing. Supervisor Parks, I see your screen is up. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm just really thankful for the ability to assist these businesses. You look at the restaurants and just how devastated the whole restaurant industry is as a result of this, and particularly that, that industry. And I really want to be able to see the effectiveness of this money going to also the employees that are, you know, out of work now. To be able to get them back in, you know, whether it's doing takeout or whatever, but in those situations where you have businesses with lots of employees, where the funds can go to keep as many of them at work, is there a way that we can kind of prioritize those businesses that have more employees when we're looking at giving out grants?
So, thank you Supervisor. That's definitely one of the things that we are considering as we develop our recommendations, and, and we're trying to strike the right balance, right? We're looking for what is the most expeditious way to get money in the hands of our business as quickly as possible? And also, how do we channel it in a way that, you know, is, is equitable and fair? And so that's definitely one of the things that we'll consider. If I might Supervisor, you, you touched on a point and point, and something that I neglected is I want to encourage everyone to go to edd.ca.gov if you have questions about unemployment, pandemic, unemployment assistance, and so forth, to make sure you get those questions answered or your application in there if you haven't.
And also that if you're having issues with paychecks, EDD, to talk to your state legislators. I know I was on the CalOES call yesterday in regards to some issues of EDD fraud. And so if you're having issues with receiving your check and so forth, to contact your state legislators so that they could assist you with that as well.
And I really see the, you know, the, a goal of these business grants is to avoid someone having to go on to unemployment. So that's, that's where I'm saying, if there's some way we can emphasize, and I think this is what the PPP originally did at the federal government, is prioritize those businesses that kept their employees working. So I, I'd like to look at that. And then the other thing is scuff law. I mean, you see some businesses that are really thumbing their nose at, even when they are told to shut down. We, and there are some very notable examples, right? I sure wouldn't want to be funding them when they're not obeying the requirements of the state government and of our county health departments, for example. Will there be an opportunity for us to, if we have to do it separately or however, for us to be able to pull those out from being qualified for grants?
Yes. Thank you Supervisor. That has been part of our discussions. It is our expectation that recipients are complying with state and local requirements, and that we're rewarding those businesses that are following those. So we will have a mechanism in place for that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your great work.
This is Bob Huber. I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, Supervisor Huber.
Thank you. Our county is doing so much to provide meals and shelter to those in need, and parallel amounts of testing and top-notch healthcare during this pandemic, but I truly believe we can do more. Our county government must do more to assist our local businesses that are suffering during these terrible times. They are not just businesses, they are people, they are families, and they are struggling. I believe we could do more to help businesses that have been shut down. We cannot wait for the state and federal governments to take action. Let's resolve to help locally with our, out of our general fund if we must. We as a government have shut them down for the protection of everyone, and we as a government have a responsibility and duty to make them whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Huber.
If I may?
Yes.
Chair Long, thank you. And thank you.
Chair Long, thank you. And thank you Supervisor Huber. I do want to emphasize, if you look down at the bottom, several points on that latest slide, one of the things that I hope you would feel good about in light of your comments, is that, that $20 million is not new state or federal money. That's because we, with the support of your board, budgeted so conservatively, that we're actually able to use some general fund dollars to do just exactly what you're saying, that we are not waiting for the federal government, we are not waiting for the state. These, this is money that we have been able to set aside because, just exactly as you said, we need to help those businesses, particularly the ones that have been so hardest hit by the health order closures. So, look forward to bringing that back in.
And with those businesses, it's restaurants, it's nail salons, it's barbers, it's childcare. There's so many different industries that will be there, and then there's also women-owned and minorities, and veterans, and local moderate income areas as well.
Family entertainment businesses, anything in the hospitality industry, service industry, absolutely.
I am excited to be rolling out this as quickly as we can.
Mike, this is Bob. I just want to say, I very much appreciate your feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor. Thank you so much, Paul. And then just one or two more slides here. Just, this is just the spinning plan. We've touched on this before, but again, to reiterate, of the 206 million in CARES funding, and I think there's some FEMA funding in there too, how it was distributed, because we think that's important from an accountability and transparency standpoint with our public. As you can see, bottom line, 91% of it went out to the community. And the 9% that was kept for county operations was actually to support COVID response efforts, things like, you know, public healthcare, and testing staff, and so forth. So, we have really tried to prioritize rent, rental assistance, food assistance, supporting the hospitals, and the city's vaccination support and testing. Again, all the testing that we provide is free. So, with that, that's our, that's our plan of action. We, again, appreciate, as always, your board's support, your ideas, and your vigilance throughout this. So, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Well, as this has been updated for the last three hours, it was a definite needed special meeting. I would think that everyone is in agreeance with it, and appreciate the staff time to make sure that our community is well informed on our COVID items. I know we're doing our press, we've been doing press conferences, but in an hour, you can only do so much. And so I really appreciate the millions of food, meals that are being put out. We have our Ventura County AAA doing that, and just so many different things. I know our supervisors, I would like to open this up for you all as well. Supervisor Parks, I see your screen.
Yes, and this is different than a press conference, because it allows us the ability to hear from each other, and for staff to hear of what our priorities are. And I very much appreciate the opportunity, and certainly after weeks of, and watching this horrible disease escalate in our county and throughout our state, it is important for us to be able to do all we can. I also, in that regard, I know that, you know, at the end of this presentation, and at the end of our meeting today, we're going to go into closed session and have that ability to also talk about, you know, the enhancing enforcement, because we are having situations out there in our community that are reckless, and are against our health orders and the state health orders. And so I want to make sure that we are out there for our community and doing all we can to protect our public's health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Ramirez?
Thank you. I do, as I've been saying, in my, up until yesterday, today, this morning, my previous capacity as a member of the City Council of Oxnard, always supported our local business. Please go out and buy your food there safely, support our local business, buy gift cards if you can, if they're providing them. But also, trying to get the word out that our response, our personal response, personal responsibility to ourselves and our family, our community, is to do everything we can to prevent the spread. And that does mean wearing a mask, washing your hands, not gathering with people. And I think some people haven't gotten the message, but some people think that they're immune, and they actually might not suffer, but the people they take the virus to, the vulnerable people in our community, in our own families, it really, it frightens me what could happen to my own family if people were not being safe. So, I want us to connect the dots about the health, the healthcare workers particularly, the scary headlines about potential collapse of healthcare systems elsewhere, as we can learn from what other people are going through and do the right thing. So, we, I know that we don't have the ability to go out and punish everyone who doesn't wear their mask outside, but we do have the ability to exert peer pressure. It used to be you could throw trash out your window and nobody thought a thing of it. It also could be, you could light up in a restaurant and smoke a cigarette, and that was okay. But now, absolutely, peer pressure tells everybody that's unacceptable conduct. And I think that's what we have to keep trying to do here, and model the behavior and not fall into any gaps that some folks in leadership have done. And I know it's not easy to always be perfect, but, you know, we all have to, we have to be the leaders to really be careful about those things we do, because people are going to say, well, they could do it, and I'll get away with it. So, I'm ranting on and on, but this is an interesting time to be taking office in the county, where, you know, in other circumstances, we'd be, you know, really in a celebratory mood. Not exactly there, I'm happy to be here, but I do think that we're, we just don't want to see any more death or illness. And there's a lot of things we could individually do about it here, in the leadership, in the community, and our neighbors, our families. We are almost to the point of having to shame people for not caring about each other. So, I'll leave it there. This is the end of my rant.
Thank you for your comments Supervisor. Supervisor Lavier or Huber, do you have any comments?
Nothing at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay then. Again, thank you for the efforts. We will be having another COVID update next week at our board meeting, and then we also have a press conference tomorrow at Public Health at 1:00, that you can be on FaceTime, or Facebook, FaceTime, Facebook. I've been on the, with the littles too much. So, thank you very much. And we will, that's just a receive and file, so no vote, but we will have item number 11 at next.
Good afternoon, Board members. Mr. Powers, Chair Long, welcome. Supervisor Ramirez, Scott Powers, County Executive Office. Before you is a recommendation for our office to work with council to finalize an agreement with World Central Kitchen to increase our capacity to have meals prepared and delivered to our at-risk seniors in the, throughout the county. World Central Kitchen will bring about 30 to 40 restaurants onboard to facilitate this, serving up to 500 meals per day, in coordination with AAA, our area agency on aging. And Victoria Jump is here as well to support this item. Included also in the scope is the opportunity to deliver meals to our testing sites on a weekly basis to serve some of the staff there, who are under some stress as well. The expanded Great Plates Program will add clients to the FEMA-funded portion of this, which is probably about 20%, 25% of the customer base. In addition, we're delivering, we're recommending delivering meals to at-risk seniors that don't fall into that Great Plates criteria. And the most important part of that criteria are individuals that aren't receiving federal assistance. Those are the people that are Great Plates eligible. And Victoria, speaking with our CEO, came to this very salient point that there's still individuals out there who are receiving federal or state assistance, who are in need of, or in risk of food insecurity. So before you is a not-to-exceed amount of $1.4 million to be put forward toward this effort. We expect this to last anywhere from three to four months, depending on the number of meals that are delivered on a daily basis, and the number of clients, because those do waiver, depending on some fall-in, fall-out of, on the list. And that concludes my remarks. Happy to take any questions.
Turn my mic on. Thank you very much. Supervisors, Supervisor Lavier, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No question. I just want to voice my absolute support for this. You know, I first met World Central Kitchen when they came into Ventura after the Thomas Fire defeat, our first responders on the front lines, and I learned just the amazing work they do across the world. And now we're in this crisis, and the fact that we can make this a win-win situation where our at-risk seniors and disabled individuals are able to get these incredibly healthy and fresh meals, and at the same time, in talking with these restaurant owners, this program has enabled so many of them just to stay alive during this pandemic. And so it's just a win-win for everybody involved. And I really appreciate the county leadership for making this extension a reality.
Thank you Supervisor Lavier. Supervisor Ramirez?
Well, I also want to echo those comments about this organization. We've seen them doing amazing work all over the world when there have been disasters, and I do know of two restaurants in Oxnard who've been working with them in the past, and I just, this has kept people alive, a lot of our vulnerable people, so totally support 100%.
Thank you very much. And we talk about just having a hot meal, but there's also the nutrition factor of it. And I dropped off food to one of the young, younger ladies, and she was just ready to, you know, boil some lentils for a meal. And keeping our elderly healthy and with nutrition is really important. And, you know, we all do, you know, pop in some Top Robin or something, but having that nutritional factor is very important. And so our restaurants do have that advantage for us to help and serve our community. So I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'll add one more thing that you just mentioned. Maybe a plug. I know all of us have worked with VCT AAA on delivery of these meals, and it's really a chance for the public to get involved and help as well. I know they're constantly looking for volunteers to deliver these meals, and so it's a great way to get out and serve your community.
You're on it. Mr. Powers, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just real quick. Appreciate the board's support of this. Many of you have been asking us, wanting us to do this, and it will expand the program to another 30 to 40 restaurants, which is great. Just the tale of one restaurant, when they were about to do, I think it was the Christmas Meals AAA, they were talking with a restaurant, and they were just in the process of laying off their staff.
Oh my goodness.
They said, wait, we need meals for the holiday, and then they rehired them back like that day. So, I appreciate Scott and Victoria and everybody jumping on this so quickly. It's making a difference.
Completely agreed. And with that, I can, I need to entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Supervisor Ramirez will do a first and a second, please.
I'll second.
Supervisor Lavier, seconds. So, roll call.
Supervisor Lavier?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. I am going to continue with the regular agenda, so I will move on to number nine, and then we will, and then we will do all of our public comments and board comments afterwards. So, number nine, I will pass this over to Supervisor Parks.
Yes, I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Carmen Ramirez as our regular appointee to the Southern California Association of Governments. I have been serving on it for about a dozen years now, and so has Supervisor Ramirez. And she has been a representative for the District 45, which includes Oxnard, Camarillo, and Port Juani. And she is also on the RENA Regional Housing Needs Assessment Committee, which is a really important committee, and is also in line for leadership roles on SCAG. So, I think it would be great for her to be our County Board of Supervisors representative. While I've enjoyed my time there, and really gained a lot, and I think brought some great things to our county, including the Clean Power Alliance as a result of working with my SCAG colleagues, I think Carmen would be a wonderful choice, Supervisor Ramirez, excuse me. And I will ask that, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and have her be our regular appointee.
Huber, second the motion.
All right. It's been first by Supervisor Parks, and second by Supervisor Huber. I would like to make a comment in saying thank you to Supervisor Parks. I know we are looking, we are going to be addressing our appointments at our next, our first regular board meeting of the year. This is a special case when our SCAG is meeting before then, and therefore we need to put a person representative on there. So Supervisor Parks, thanks you for your work with the SCAG, and that you represent, you would like Supervisor Ramirez to represent now, because I think it's a very important position for our county to be represented and represented well on their officers. So, I appreciate that very much. I will pass it on to Supervisor Ramirez.
I just appreciate that. I do think it's important for our county to have a strong voice there, not be forgotten. In every way, we have a strong connection to legislators, and I was on a call this morning with Senator Limon about what Ventura County needs in terms of transportation, disaster preparedness, et cetera. And that's really a good place to be with the other members of elected officials all over the six Southern California counties. So I really do appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Yes, I agree. That was an important thing to do on our special meeting. We couldn't wait, because we missed that opportunity. So, thank you. Roll, if there aren't any further comments, roll call, please.
Supervisor Lavier?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Thank you very much, and yes.
Chair Long.
Yes, and so that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item is our discussion, number 10, which is our discussion in regards to the district attorney's appoint, office, actually. In the last meeting, I had asked in my public comments that we bring this up to the board and talk about a possible recruitment, or appointment, or non-appointment for the district attorneys, as Greg Totten is going to be retiring. And so I appreciate us being able to talk about this even earlier than I was hoping to. So, I will pass this on to Mr. Powers. Since we do have two new board members, this is really important for us all to be very transparent, for me, as to what our discussions are and what we can or decide to do or not do. So with that, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Long, Board members. So, in light of your direction, Chair Long, we did bring back and prepare this board letter for your board's consideration here today. Of course, with Mr. Totten retiring, his effective retirement date is January 9th, after his 18 years of distinguished service and career as our district attorney. And so now, by law, the, your board is required to appoint a, to appoint a district attorney to serve out the remainder of his term. A special election is not permitted. I want to be clear, council has advised us of that. And so, your Chair, Chair Long, requested that we bring back an item to your board in January, so your board could have the opportunity to make that appointment, and also to consider applicants for the position. So, in that regard, we have laid out in the board letter, a one possible approach. As council has made clear, the power and the authority to appoint the district attorney rests solely with your board. There is no established or mandatory process for any such appointment. But in order to assist in your board's consideration, we have outlined a potential process for you to consider. And in that regard, we could walk you through it here, just briefly, what the steps would be, or wait at your board's request.
I would appreciate for us to be walking us through this.
Thank you so much. Happy to, as I'll ask RHR Director Sean Otten to do that.
I'm full disclosure. I really appreciate understanding the options and making sure that we have all the information for our decisions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chair Long, Mr. Powers. So, very briefly, this is one option that we thought you might consider. We would open a recruitment essentially, from as early as today, closing, well, the end of the recruitment would, might be targeted at the 26th, which is a regular board meeting. In order to achieve that, we would open the recruitment and advertise for the position in local media, as well as social media. So, local media might be the VC Star, Vida, Acorn, social media might be our Facebook and Nextdoor. Then we, and I have a sample of what's in your board letter in the next slide, which, if I have the clicker.
Do you have the clicker?
Whoever has it would, not quite. Whoever has it would, not quite just yet, but I was anticipating. Oh, you got it? Okay, thank you. So this would be the, it's one of our regular recruitment brochures that we, we've compiled with, it's got four, five pages. But if you just go back one second to the first slide. So we would open it up as soon as today, advertise, and close it on the 19th. On the 20th and the 22nd, we would do the following essentially. We would compile the resumes and verify. So along with the, the application basically will consist of three items. A resume, a declaration stating that all contained in the resume is true, as well as the fact that they are in good standing with the California Bar Association. And then they are also a resident and voter, registered voter in the county of Ventura. So we would, we would get the declaration, get the resume, and we would also get a submission, a signed permission for us to conduct a background check. So all, all the qualified applicants, we would do a background check prior to bringing the applications to you at the, to the board. Everything, by the way, that we have, that we compile will be public record, other than some private information, which we can, will redact before including it with the board agenda. So in an open session on the 26th, if that, if that meets your scheduling, we can schedule the candidates essentially to via Zoom, and maybe we can go to the next, next page and the page after. Via Zoom, they can, they can essentially be ready to be interviewed by you at your option. Now, along with the minimum requirements of the position, which is by law, we've put in some guidelines that you may, you may wish to consider. And if, and if approved by you, this is how it would be posted as it is, as it is up there. Basically, that they have to have a comprehensive knowledge of criminal law, procedures, and evidentiary standards, as well as a working ability to effectively delegate responsibility. And I won't read the whole thing. These are, these are items that we've got in our job description, actually, that are posted currently. So it does have some, some guidelines above the minimum, minimum requirements. If you wouldn't mind the next slide. The declaration is simply this, that they will sign, and they'll give us the state bar number, too. So we're going to go, we'll do two things. We will, we would go to the California State Bar and check that they have, they're in active status. And we'll also check with our, with Markland essentially, that they are registered voters. Next slide, please. This is the background, so this is basically the, what you would see is our regular background. Next slide, please. So once we have all the resumes and we've notified all of them as to who, you know, who's qualified, and we would tee them up to be on Zoom essentially at 8:30 in the morning. That's not saying, it's not saying that who would be interviewed and when they would be interviewed, but they'd be ready at 8:30 in the morning. It would be up to your, your option, Board of Supervisors, whether you would want to interview all applicants or a subset of the applicants. So I think some of it will be dependent on the number of applicants, obviously, and who. But if you received a large number of applicants, one option that you could, you could look at is of course, limiting that number through a variety of criteria, one of which might be you just, each of you pick your top three, and then you interview a maximum of 15 people. So you would do some selection as you review all the resumes ahead of time. So that's what we would recommend if there's a large volume. Next slide, please. So again, at that time, on the 26th, your board could, and the chair could determine the overall length of each interview. So again, maybe based on how many applicants you actually have and the quality of them. Each applicant, though, we would suggest, receive a five-minute window where they can make an opening statement and a, and an overview of their qualifications and why they should be selected. Thereafter, you might follow up with questions or follow-up questions or other questions that you may have. There's no, again, there's nothing prescribed in this, but it would be, that would be the interview. And then, closing for each applicant, you might give them a minute to summarize, make a closing statement. Next slide, please. So again, I won't belabor this, but because of COVID, we recommend Zoom. Of course, when they're on Zoom, they will see the other applicants being, being interviewed. So how do you select the ordering? We might pick names out of a hat, for example, by lottery essentially, so that it's no favoritism and it's somewhat randomly but fairly selected. Yes, so I think, next slide, please. And next slide after that. And then each board member, once you've heard everyone, you've heard their arguments and you've done your questioning, perhaps your board then would select their top candidate, and then it's time for you to discuss and, and you conduct your deliberations and make an appointment. So this is just one approach. It's, it's, it's quick and it's all in open session. There are of course, other means of doing this, but I am here now to understand your wishes and we can make any changes that you would, you would like to this process.
Thank you. The first one I needed to clarify with the county council is that do we, is it mandated that we have to appoint somebody to this position as an elected official terms out? We're told that they are not, we are not able to do a special election for the public to pick this elected official's position. So if you can clarify this, I'd like that. Mr. Walker.
Certainly, Chair Long. The, there's a government code statute that says that your board shall appoint a replacement, a successor to fill a vacant term of an elected official. And the Attorney General in 2016 issued an opinion that said, this is mandatory, that a Board of Supervisors must do it, a Board of Supervisors cannot decline to do it, and that the Board of Supervisors must do so within a reasonable time. Because the statute doesn't say how soon the board must make the appointment. And typically, when a statute requires an action but doesn't say when that action has to take place, the court will infer a reasonable time. What's reasonable depends on facts and circumstances. So there's no, I can't tell you it's two months, it's four months, six months, or 12 months. It's reasonable, it's within a reasonable time. The Attorney General opinion said, however, that again, the board by inaction can't just let it go until the next election. So therefore, given that the next election for the district attorney in our county is June of 2020, while I can't tell you where the line is between unreasonable and reasonable, I think waiting until June of 2022 would be unreasonable. So therefore, your board must make a selection. How long you take, you have a reasonable period of time. So you can make a decision, obviously, by the end of the month. You could have a process that takes two, three, four months. All that would be reasonable under the circumstances. And then, once you appoint that person, that person does become the district attorney. The person is not an acting district attorney, not an interim district attorney, that person is the district attorney.
And as far as the interview process, this has to be done in open session. We can't do the interviews in closed session. One reason I state that is in the presentation, when the first interview goes, they hear what they said, and then so on and so on. It kind of, the last person has already heard everyone's interview. And so we are not able to do this in closed session, you're stating?
Yeah, it's two responses to that. First, correct, the board itself cannot meet in closed session to discuss this. Your board's aware that there are certain exceptions to the requirement that your board act in open session. Those are very limited. There are exceptions for personnel items to be considered in closed session. However, those exceptions are, do not cover elected officials. The next question you might ask is, well, we aren't electing somebody, we're appointing someone. Well, someone's already thought about that argument, and the Attorney General has opined that no, you cannot consider appointments to elected positions in closed session. So to the extent your board as a whole is going to conduct interviews, yes, it has, they have to take place in public. Your board has an option, of course, to, to approach the interviews through a different process where your, your full board is not conducting the interviews. If your board were to do that, those interviews would not have to take place in public.
Thank you for the clarification on that. I know that I've been asked by many people in regards to that. So thank you. Another question I had, since I'm chair, I get to ask these questions first, is, is it a reasonable timeframe based on what our county council has stated in regards to coming back for the interview process? I understand the weight of having to do this and the importance in making sure we have the right person, since we do have to appoint someone, and we're in COVID land of emergency systems and so forth. So I'm just questioning, I know I personally asked that we could have it come to, but as you know, I like staff pushing back on me sometimes and saying, hey, white flag, this is too quickly an action, and that we, if we can move it to February, we could. So I just wanted to ask that as well.
I think it's reasonable. I, it's a, it's quicker than some recruitments we do, but it is a reasonable process to go through to have it open for a period of time. Because the pool of candidates, sometimes we do longer recruitments, because we do national recruitments, the, the labor pool is, is highly specialized and we look, look nationally. But in this case, the person has to be a resident of the county of Ventura. And so I think it can be done in this reasonable, it's reasonable to do it in this time.
Okay. And then also, Mr. Totten had provided a very nice letter in regards to his retirement, but also stating Cheryl Temple. So this would be an open recruitment, it's not only for one that was suggested by Dr. Mr. Totten.
The, the breadth of the recruitment frankly, is up to your board. And the proposal in the board letter doesn't limit it to, to present employees, doesn't exclude present employees, it opens up to any qualified applicant. But again, your board has the authority to limit the pool if it wants to.
Okay. And so when you say that, there are some people that state if we appoint someone today, we're giving them a head, a foot up, a step up for elections. And some people have stated to me that putting, appointing a person that was not going to run could be a choice, so that then it is an open process for community to, at elections, elect someone. And I wanted to understand that a little bit from the county council's point of view.
Sure, just one clarification, I don't think you intended this, but I just, for the public to be aware, your board could not appoint someone today, just because we didn't agendize it.
Thank you.
Under the Brown Act. So by today, I, you know, I'm assuming you mean kind of soon.
Yes.
The, while your board could state a preference for an applicant who doesn't intend to run, and could even ask that applicant to make some sort of representation that he or she, if appointed, will not run, that would not be a legally binding promise, and that person could change his or her mind.
Thank you. I need a clarification on that. I love the lawyer talk. You can't do one thing, you can do another. So I appreciate that. Now with your application, they're going to submit also a CV with it?
Yes, it would basically be a resume, a CV, as well as a declaration.
Okay. I want, I, I know I have a lot of questions, but I wanted to make sure I open it up to the other supervisors, too, before we kind of deliberate. Supervisor Ramirez, did you have a question?
I think the process is laid out here. I would be, first of all, I want to congratulate our district attorney on his long career here. Mr. Totten served us well. And he's not in the room, but I, I hope he gets that message. I think the process has been laid out here. It does seem pretty quick, but probably is, I think there, we all know there are a lot of, a number of people interested in this, and the word will get out. I would like to ask Mr. Walker about this. I see in the room, we have our county clerk, Mr. Lund, back there. Thank you this morning for swearing me in. And we see our sheriff also, these are two elected officials. And I'd just like to ask if there's a distinction in, God forbid, they decide to abandon us midterm, what, do, are they subject to the same government code as the just elected district attorney?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so there have to be an appointment by the board, there would not be, a special election's not available, and it has to be an open session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just, just curious if there's the same rule applied.
Yes, and just to, to further respond to the special election, that's another area where the Attorney General has also opined that a special election is not available to your board. And that's, because the legislature has adopted the statute that says your board must select the replacement. And therefore, since the legislature has, has identified the way for that to happen, a special election is not available to your board.
Well, I will also just, for anybody's curiosity, today, tonight, the city council of Oxnard is dealing with this issue for my vacant seat, and they have the option of a special election, as well as appointment and various things.
And that's correct. And as, as you know Supervisor, different statutes apply to counties versus cities. This, this is a county-specific statute as to, as to elected county officials.
Thank you.
And so that's any elected official in the county. So for example, like a board of supervisor. So if I decided to get out of here.
Go to horny.
That would be, would this board be voting for it, or would it be the governor?
The, this statute that I've been referring to does not cover supervisors.
Okay. Thank you. I figure we might as well ask. Supervisor Lavier, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to echo what Supervisor Ramirez said and thank Mr. Totten for his 18 years of service. He's been an excellent DA. I appreciate what he's done over the years. And you know, he's leaving a legacy, and I think it's really important to talk about the Family Justice Center and, you know, really a legacy of his of, of working to support victims and their families. So I want to thank him for his service. And with the item at hand, it is a quick process. I think it's okay how staff has laid it out. I think we can handle that. I will say, this is, as everyone knows, a really important position. And I don't know if five minutes is enough for us to get a feeling for the applicants and what their vision is for the office and why they, that, why that person should be selected. And so given option one or two, I would, I would want to go with option two. And then I also know that county council proposed a third possibility, and that is the appointment of an ad hoc committee where several supervisors get together and review the pool of applications and pick five, six, seven, whatever it is, numbers to come in for the actual interview process. And so whether it's, it's two or three, I would be fine with either. I just think it's important that we give this final batch of applicants who are going to interview, more than five minutes to present their case.
Very good point Supervisor Lavier. Supervisor Huber, do you have any questions, comments? Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I really appreciate the great work of, of our district attorney, Totten, and I wish him well in his new position that he'll be taking on. I know it was a big decision. And as Supervisor Lavier pointed out, the Family Justice Center was a major accomplishment. But also seeing his wonderful work with the victims' advocates in assisting the victims and families of the borderline mass shooting, it was just, it was amazing how much they did and how much they continue to do, and realize that is just something that his office does. So his work for victims has been exceptional. And I, I realize that we want to be as transparent as possible. So I would never want to do this in closed session. I wouldn't want to limit the ability of our board to, you know, have the, you know, have it all out there for the public to see. So I actually like this government code that that requires, that it all be done in open session. And I look at my city in Thousand Oaks, there were a couple of times where they appointed city council members, like they have that choice in Oxnard. And in those instances where they did, they basically put out there the And in those instances where they did, they basically put out there the, you know, the call for applications. I think in one case, they did it eight days in advance, another time 11 days in advance. So it, it was a pretty quick process. People who are eyeing this position obviously, you know, have to give it some serious thought and have to be qualified and have to be attorneys and be residents. So I know there are some exceptional candidates out there. And so I really do look forward to being able to have that ability to put someone, the best person we can put, in this really important position. And with that, how, how the process goes, I know Supervisor Lavier was saying option two, I think it's really important to make sure we can make it as fair as possible, knowing that they're on Zoom and can hear each other. So one of the things that I would support is when they make their five minutes or however many minutes we decide, presentation, to not ask them questions and let all the applicants who will be presenting do their five minutes or whatever. And then we can go ahead and ask questions because that way they can each give their, their speech that they think will highlight their best points. And I think that would probably be a good way to put an element of fairness in the fact that they can all hear each other. And I do support the staff recommendation. I personally would like to interview all applicants unless we end up with so many applications and that, that's where I think Supervisor Lavier was talking about option two kicking in. That's if we have a lot of applications. But otherwise, it's five minutes each, you know, being able to do 10 people is an hour,
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Parks. Is there any other questions that anyone has, comments associated with this? This is a very huge deal. Supervisor Huber?
Yes, I, thank you. I just, very briefly, I prefer an open recruitment and public interviews, and I support what Supervisor Parks has said about the interview process. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Supervisor Huber. This is a very interesting position that our board is in. It's not very often we get to appoint a DA or an elected position. And I take this very strongly as to how we are discussing this and how this interview process is going to be. We know already that there's over four or five people that are very interested in this position. And so I appreciate the CEO's office, Sean, for bringing this to us today because this is a special situation. And so to make sure that we're doing this in the correct way is important. So what I'm hearing based on the supervisors and their speaking, we do have one speaker, so I'll go to that afterwards, is that they, they appreciate the open, openness and transparency of this to start the application process and to make sure that we're coming back to interview all, all those that are submitting it. I will move, before I ask for a supervisor to make a motion, I would like to have our speaker, we have one person on Zoom. And so I want to make sure we hear from Julian Porter first before we continue. I do know there were some letters, emails submitted at our clerk of the board that are all attached to our agenda as well. So Julian, hello.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I just want to highlight the importance, as I think you've all stated, of appointing a new district attorney. I think especially in the past year, coronavirus really has exposed and highlighted the injustices and inequities in our community. And the DA does have a certain amount of power to ameliorate that. I think, one, by acknowledging the racial inequity in our community. This past November, the board declared racism a public health crisis. And so I think it's important that whoever is appointed to district attorney agrees with that sentiment and, but not only agrees with it, is willing to actually do something about it. And that might mean prosecuting law enforcement, that might mean being adversarial to ICE agents. I think anybody who has, you know, paid attention at all or interacted with the criminal business system can see how broken it is. And the DA does hold a lot of power and has the opportunity to make some changes and make that system work better. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks. Julian, thank you very much for your comments. Really do appreciate it at this time and it's such a unique position that our board is in. I appreciate the public comments. So with that, Sean, any ending, final requests or comments?
Well, may I just?
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I have just one follow-up question, if that's okay?
Yes.
And I agree, first of all, I agree with Supervisor Parks' recommendation as to holding the questions until the end. I do think that that's a good idea. And she raised the question, it's a good one, of, it might be tough right now to make a decision because we don't know what the applicant pool is. And let's say we get seven applicants, then it would make sense to interview all of them, even with an extended period of interview, 10, 15 minutes. And so do we have to tonight decide what the interview process is going to be? Can we wait until we see what the applicant, the applicant, the final pool is? Or just what's the timeline for that?
Well, that's a good point. And it, for the time, as a public comment or an interview, that is up to the board chair at that time to, to pick the allowed time. Sean, would you like to hit a little bit more on that?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a good point in that you could wait till the next session just to finalize some of these points. Do you want to give them five, 10, or 15 minutes? Would you like to have everyone, these are the points I've heard today. Would you like everyone first to come and give their opening statements and then bring a subset in to just ask follow-up questions? I think we can gather that information from you and that direction from you at the next session when, when, as long as we have overall direction, we'll just fine tune it once you know the, the pool of candidates.
And when you, when you say that, so the final, the candidates will be giving their information, their interview on the 26th. So is there a point in which the meeting before that, we can at least know the list of names of who has submitted so that then we can go over how we're going to be presenting?
My, my understanding and county council can correct me if, everything will be included in the board packet. So their, their resumes, their redacted background information, and their declaration.
I'll just raise really what's a practical issue. Actually, your board doesn't, after the 12th, there is no meeting on the 19th. So through this process, you probably won't know by the 12th how many applicants you're going to have. And then your next meeting won't be until the 26th. It is correct, your board can change this up in any way your board wants to. Of course, that has to happen at a board meeting. You have to make that change at a board meeting. So, so it's more a practical issue. How do you communicate to the candidates that they have three minutes, five minutes, or 15 minutes for a presentation? That's a practical issue. Your board at the, at the actual meeting where you're going to interview folks could say, here are the ones we're going to interview, here are the ones we aren't going to interview. You know, here, here's how much time we're going to give them, here's how we're going to, we're going to either hold our questions or not. So it's more the practical issue. How do you give notice to the candidates as to how much time they have for their opening presentation?
Exactly. And I like to have the interview process very clean. And so the reason why I asked that, I kind of plugged you in right there, teed you off, is the fact that if our board wanted to accept those that applied by the 26th, go over how we're going to interview them, and then we bring them on the second, which is the following board meeting to do the interview process. That's why I was asking. So I wanted the board members to think about that.
It may be that if we were to say five minutes as proposed by staff, and we have a lot, so they all have their five minutes, as Supervisor Lavier is saying, that's not really enough. But at that point, we could ask specifically of those candidates that we're most interested in follow-up questions. And then I think they would have a longer period of time that they may need in order to give us full information. So it's possible we could just follow with the directions that has been laid out here with the idea that everyone will get their, their five minutes and then be able to expand on that if, once we hear them and have more desire to hear more from them.
I think, if I may just add, that was the intent of our, our submission to you, is that, you know, in a normal interview, the candidate starts with, here's who I am, and they, they make introductory comments. But then, as an, the interview may last a half an hour or an hour based on, based on your interest in follow-up questions. So you can ask them to delve into certain aspects of their, of their background based on your desire. Of course, if someone doesn't look interesting to you, that, that might be it, they have the five minutes. And, and you go, thank you, no further questions. Otherwise, you can talk to them for a half an hour if you'd like.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Parks and Supervisor Lavier, or your concern?
Yeah, that, that's a fair point. I guess my, my concern is what if we get 70 applications? Are we going to spend five minutes with 70 people and just, you know, and, and just, that's the scenario where I kind of want to do a little forward planning.
Yes. And that's why I was asking about the dates so that we could at least, so in our system, we will find out how many candidates, you know, seven days ahead of, the week before, it'll get into the system that the agenda's out, the letter's there, the applicants are there. But then we'll either find out on that day if there's five applicants or 25 applicants.
You will know on the closing Thursday or Friday, whatever that, whenever it's published. You will have the agenda and the materials included. And so it might include five or 50. And then at the time where you, you come in, you know, if you, if you are amenable to our suggestion, you can go, oh, it's 50 candidates. We'll just pick the top three. Each of us will pick three and we'll have, we'll interview 15 in total because that's, or you can, or you can of course interview all of them. But, but part of the option that we gave, gave you, if you're amenable to it, is off the bat to limit the number based on your review over the weekend or, or on the Monday before of the resumes. You can go, okay, I'm interested in these three folks. And then each of you can put, submit the three names in and it'll be 15 people. And then we would, staff would, at that time, tell the applicants, okay, you guys, you 15 stay on, you 35, thank you very much. You haven't been selected for an interview.
So then we would take the staff recommendations as to the interview process. And then the board chair would then be the one that is orchestrating and making sure that we're going through the interview process and then we'll open it up to questions after. In that way, we can all ask our questions.
I, I would like to propose a motion and then we can move from there. How's that?
Thank you, Supervisor.
And that would be to do option two, but change it if the applicant pool exceeds 15, not 10. And then if it does exceed 15, then we will do the, each, we'll each select three that we want to interview.
I'll, I'll second that. I think that's a fair compromise.
And, and in addition, the stack for recommendations for the advertising and posting and so forth, that's included in the board letter, correct?
Yes, everything else with the, and starting off with the initial five minutes so they know that in advance, but know that they will, if they're being considered, we will be asking more questions of them.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification in case anyone watches this later on to clarify, we have that information. So thank you. So that has been first by Supervisor Parks and second by Supervisor Lavier. I will open it up to staff. Sean, is, are we clear in our motion?
Yes, I think that's clear. The only, the only change is the 15 from the 10.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to make sure we're clear on that. And if there's nothing from county council, yes?
I just have one, one point to emphasize. If the pool is such that each board member is to identify his or her top three, obviously you don't share that among yourselves. That's a one-way email to CEO, not to each other.
Thank you for that clarification. We do not want to go against the Brown Act. So with that, clarification, if there's nothing else. Clerk of the Board, roll call please.
Supervisor Lavier?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Long?
Yes. So that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. This is an important issue. And Craig Totten, if you are watching, we are saddened to see you leave. And I am so excited for you to be representing us at the state because I know that Ventura County is very close to your heart. Even though you'll be working there, you still will be having a home here and we are all here for you. So thank you and wish you all the best. And we hope that the, our board serves you in appointing a person that will follow well in your footsteps. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next item we have is our public comments. And we have one public comment. And also again, just great job to Mr. Powers and the CEO's staff for putting that all together. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
The public comment is from Andrea Sell. It reads, thank you for the opportunity to share. I am deeply concerned that there is no clear publicly announced way for frontline healthcare workers at urgent and primary care practices that are not hospital affiliated to request and receive the COVID vaccine. These offices are the frontline for many COVID patients who without care would end up in the ER. They are also, are often sparsely staffed. If the staff here gets sick, the whole office needs to close down, leaving many patients without care. Please set up a way for primary and urgent care healthcare workers to receive the vaccine as soon as possible.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Next item is our board comments. And with that, I will start with our very own Supervisor Ramirez to start us off.
Be considerate of other people and support our local businesses, protect your family from this horrible disease. Look at the headlines, they're very scary. We don't want that to happen here. I'm, I'm very concerned about our healthcare workers, who I know several of them and they're, they are exhausted. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramirez, and welcome.
Thank you.
No. We'll get that on our regular meeting. Thank you for asking. Supervisor Lavier?
Chair, thank you.
No, no comments? Okay. Supervisor Huber?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I hope everyone had a restful and peaceful holiday. My thoughts and prayers go to those suffering physically and financially. I wanted to welcome my new colleagues, Matt Lavier and Carmen Ramirez. This is an extraordinary time to serve on the board supervisors, but I'm confident that both of you are up to the challenge. In closing, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks that listen here that I have emailed to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Huber. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I have actually a slide to show this individual, Harry Norkin, who's in the middle holding the clock. He just recently passed away, 99 years young. United States Army, was with our, our, our Army during D-Day. He has been a tremendous volunteer in the Caneo Valley, including the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging, Global Senior Center Commission. He played a part in our senior master plan, volunteered for the Caneo Adult School, Caneo Free Clinic, volunteer in policing. He looked great in a uniform. Driver for Meals on Wheels, editor of the Senior Buzz Newsletter. We awarded him as our aging, our Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Optimal Aging Award. He also won the eldest active senior award, which went to actually the, our eldest individual at our senior summits, and he kept getting it year after year after. at our senior summits and he kept getting it year after year after year. And he is just so much appreciated. And here in that photo, he received the first ever senior of the decade award given by the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging. And I know he will very much be missed. And then I just wanted to mention, seen online that it's been learned that refrigerator trucks have arrived at Las Rogas Hospital to store the dead due to morgue overflow. One veteran nurse at the hospital stated, this is the worst day in our emergency room history. And, you know, if that doesn't sober individuals who think they might be able to risk a little bit more out there with knowing what we have with COVID and the high contagious rate, I hope that will make people disinclined. So with that, I end my board comments. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. For my comments, I just again wish you all a very happy new year, 2021. Hopefully we will be able to put an end, or close enough to an end for this pandemic so that we can all work, keep our businesses open, feed our kids and families and house. I've been on various federal, state and local COVID calls since the last board meeting and really advocating for our community, for our workers, for vaccines. Appreciate the board in supporting letters to the state. We've also sent out the Southern California Region Letter to the state with our Southern California Region Counties. We're continually having the hard discussions. As Supervisor Park said about a refrigerator coming in, it saddens my heart completely because those are loved ones. You know, those are people that will not, no longer be there. So this year for me is to be gracious as to all that we have. And with that, I wanted to celebrate the first baby born in Ventura County Hospital, Valentina Mendez, at 12:02 AM at Ventura County Medical Center. She was actually 10 weeks early, I understand. Her mom, farm worker, was in, in the hospital for several weeks beforehand and that she is small and mighty. And I feel that this year, 2021, we are strong and we are mighty and we will, we will get past this. So with all the gloom and sadness that we have, there is also celebrations. And so I want to wish all of you a safe and, and happy day and just thank you for your continued dedication to help us all get through this. So thank you. And with that, Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Long. Board members, just real quick, again, welcome to Supervisor Ramirez. Already been great working together. Did want to recognize the fire department for their Spark of Love campaign they managed to generate with the support of a lot of county employees, well, 6,000 toys to children and family services are HSA department. So Captain McGrath and Crystal Stratton, just amazing job. And also kudos to the auditor and team for getting the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the FY19 CAFR, the 36th consecutive year. So it's, it's tough to get that every year, but you're keeping the streak alive. So that's excellent work. And...
Tougher every year too.
What's that? Tougher every year, right? Because they add more rules, you know, every year they make it more complicated. So it's excellent work by your team. I see, I see your truck here very late at night, working on that with your team. And then, yes, Supervisor Parks' comment about the Las Rogas nurse, that just says it all. And then Valentina at VCMC, maybe she'll be our, our patron for, for this year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I also have a list of adjourned in memory to submit to our clerk of the board. And welcome again Supervisor Lavier and Supervisor Ramirez. We will have our official swearing in, which is exciting to, to be serving for four years with all of you. So that'll be it. So thank you. As we end our open session, I want to ask County Council, we're moving into closed session items, will there be anything to report out?
There could be.
There could be. All right. Well then with that, I will close our open session. Board members, we will move into, to closed session. And if we have anything to report out, we will come back into open session and report out. So thank you so much for everyone and we'll see you next week. Our press conference is tomorrow at 1 o'clock. Tune in, it's at the Pleasant Valley, not Pleasant Valley, but the Public Health Office, but you can watch us on FaceTime, Facebook. FaceTime, Facebook. Thank you so much. Hello, thank you very much for... Hello, thank you very much for tuning into our Board of Supervisors meeting. We are returning from closed session and our County Council has something to announce. So County Council, please.
Thank you Chair Long. So on item 12 on the agenda, the closed session item, initiation of litigation, a number of cases, five. The board has authorized County Council to initiate litigation against the following operations for repeated violations of the state health order and closure orders issued by the county health officer. One, the original pizza cookery in Thousand Oaks. Two, Fitness 19 in Newbury Park, Simi Valley in Thousand Oaks. Three, Anytime Fitness Ventura at locations on Johnson Drive and Thompson Boulevard. Four, Coliseum Boot Camp in Ventura. And five, House of Gaines in Port Huaynimi. The vote was four to one with Supervisor Huber dissenting. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for reporting out. This concludes our Board of Supervisors meeting today. Our next Board of Supervisor meeting will be our regular meeting on January 12th at 8:30, so please join us then. Please join us at the social media, Facebook, news, VenturaCountyRecovers.org for any information on our COVID-19 updates and please be safe out there. Have a good night.